You look good.
Good.
I know you had it rough, rough ones.
You have told me about. You're gracious.
You look good.
Good.
I know you had it rough, rough ones. You have told me about.
You're gracious.
Good to see.
Likewise.
Hi, Tim. At the end, I have to ask one question. Because the Astral Society has some marvelous pieces. I think maybe we could use them in the morning. I have no thought. I'll pass on the message to you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Your sister.
Okay. We'll always need a quorum, a physical quorum. We keep cheating.
Go for the twenty five.
Yes. She's trying to see if we have some kind of agreement.
I told her you would be the best one to research all of that old, old history. I know that there was some force with Dallas. When Rebecca resigned or the South Royal was reducing all of that, but. But I don't know if we didn't, I don't think we incorporated in agreement. A long time.
I know who might know. I'm gonna stay.
Okay.
I already had some. Oh, question, okay. They could call me to pick him up, but. He said, yeah, right.
Victor.
Well, he's here.
Yeah, I think he's getting coffee.
Oh, okay.
I know.
No, he called me to come up, but I was in gym gardens.
Oh, okay.
Trying to at least do a couple minutes.
All right.
Yeah, we're running a little bit late. She said that we can start without her. And how about while they're, can they go through shelters online? Oh, okay. I can remember someone. And Victor. He's right here. Yeah, yeah.
Erica did count.
You don't read. Don't tell me.
And we're going to BG. Why were the BG? Cut it short, I believe. Agent introduced me.
You saw my tablet and then I was like, fine, I gotta go. You saw my text.
Yes, thank you. No, yeah. You saved me from getting a stream. You told me to.
Speeding taken here.
Okay, Erica, Councilman Fahed, you said is already online. All right, let's get started. Call the role, please. Mayor Mitchell, here. Vice Mayor Vasquez.
Here.
Councilman Santin.
Here.
Councilwoman Bravo will be here shortly. Councilman Fahed.
Here.
I hear him.
Here.
There is a quorum present. Can we do something to make sure we hear Councilman Fahed better?
All right, just as a test, you guys can hear me, okay?
Yeah, it's delayed, but I hear.
I'm here. I hear you guys perfectly, so let me know if there's anything I need to do.
We'll get started in just a moment. Councilman Fahed is joining us virtually and we're having trouble connecting with him.
Mayor, just testing the audio. I am here, present and accounted for.
A little bit.
Can you guys hear me? Test, 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 one, two, three, four. I can hear you guys perfectly, but apparently you guys are having trouble hearing me.
So when they come up, just say your name and your address for the record.
Thank you.
We're getting there.
I look pregnant. I used to look pregnant.
Not Nelson.
Nope. It's weird to point me on the side. You got the full side?
Yeah, it's working.
It does not work.
So, um. Okay, there's a councilman that's on. And you can't hear him. Right now.
Technology is wonderful, except when it's not working.
When isn't that? I got twice.
Mayor, can you hear me? I'm being asked to speak.
We hear you loud and clear, Councilman.
Okay, thank you.
All right. You already got him listed as for the role, right? Let the record show that Councilwoman Bravo is with us now. All right. Welcome, everyone, to our local planning agency meeting of February tenth, twenty twenty five. And the first order of business is approval of minutes for the October twenty eighth, twenty twenty four LPA meeting. To the chair, I had some changes on the minutes.
So I think I spoke to Erica, but I don't know if she was able to change it for the. Recreational and the parking second reading.
Oh, I'm sorry. This is for the LPA. Oh, sorry, never mind. That's for the next.
The regular meeting?
Yeah, I'm off.
Okay, all right.
I'm already in the council meeting.
All right, do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? Call the vote, please. Vice Mayor Vasquez?
Yes.
Councilman Santin?
Yes.
Councilwoman Bravo?
Yes.
Councilman Fahed?
Yes.
Mayor Mitchell?
Yes.
The motion carries.
Thank you. All right, we go into a public hearing for item three A, and I'll have our city attorney read the ordinance, please.
Good evening, Mayor and Council and members of the public. This is an ordinance of the City of Miami Springs, Florida. I'm ending chapter one fifty zoning code of the city's code of ordinances by amending section one fifty dash zero one seven recreational vehicles to provide comprehensive amendments related to permitted parking and storage areas, setbacks, maintenance, use, and quantity of recreational vehicles, which include but are not limited to boats, campers, and motor coaches. Repealing section ninety one dash zero two parking or storing on public property, amending section one oh one dash zero one supplemental code enforcement citation system to amend the schedule of civil infractions and of civil penalties related to violations pertaining to recreational vehicles, providing for conflicts, providing for severability, providing for codification, and providing for an effective date. Mayor and council, for the benefit of you all, as well as those members of the public, I just wanted to give some background as to what we're doing at this meeting versus the next meeting. So as you know, the local planning agency meeting is required for changes on our zoning code. And so you, as the city council, sit as the local planning agency and you consider these ordinances. Tonight, you will be making a recommendation on this ordinance as well as the driveway ordinance to yourselves when you will be later sitting in your capacity as the city council. Just to get ahead of it, the ordinances that are on the seven P M. regular city council meeting agenda, staff will be asking that we defer all three ordinances, the hearing on those. There is a new notice requirement from the state that we need to comply with, and so relatively new. And so we'll be doing that, and those will be scheduled for a second reading on February twenty fourth. So assuming that the council agrees, that'll be the hearing on the twenty fourth. And we just unfortunately didn't make the notice. The notice did not get done in time, and so we need to reset that. So we will, the idea tonight is that we will receive your feedback on both of these ordinances. We will do whatever we are directed to do by the council. And at second reading, if you may have a different ordinance, depending on the feedback that we received tonight from you all. So shifting gears to the RV ordinance. So the first reading of this ordinance was held on January twenty seventh at your last count.
Heidi, let's do this. Let's go ahead and have the public hearing for. I'm sorry, you're doing the RV. Thank you. I thought you were going toward the driveway.
You wanted me to present, explain, and then take feedback?
Yes, I thought you were going to the driveway and I.
No, no, no.
Okay.
No, no, no. So we held the first reading of the recreational vehicles ordinance on January twenty seventh. The ordinance that is included in your agenda packet this evening includes the modifications that were requested by council. I know that there were some points in that meeting where not everyone agreed, but there was a majority that did ask for certain things to be changed. And so the majority view as well was included for second reading. So if you'd like, Mayor, I can go over sort of as a whole, what the ordinance does and provide some feedback, or we can just go into the.
No, let's go ahead because there's been some, I think, misunderstanding of what was originally posted and how this is the purpose of council meetings. I don't know if most of you are aware of, but because of the Florida sunshine law, we don't discuss, we cannot discuss anything except at these meetings. So when an ordinance is proposed, the first time that we get to discuss it is at the first reading together. And it gets massaged very often until for the second reading and to allow for a public comment anywhere along the road. Okay, so I think some people are under, I know I've gotten some calls under the perception that was initially the first ordinance is what is in place, and that was changed quite a bit after the meeting or during the meeting last January twenty seventh.
Right, so the the primary purpose of this ordinance was discussed at the February twenty twenty four meeting. And so the purpose was to identify ways to improve our code to help the city's existing prohibit, help enforce the existing prohibition on using RVs as sleeping or living quarters. That is existing language in your code. There's no question about it, but there was a need to help code enforcement enforce. So at the request of the council, we prepared revisions to the ordinance and presented those to you in January. RVs are currently defined in your code, and it's a very broad definition. So while the general public may think, and some of us even, may think of RVs in a, in the context of motor homes and campers and things that are used in for sleeping, our definition of RVs encompasses that and more. So when we're talking about RVs tonight, just keep that in mind. They can include things like boats, airboats, golf carts, low-speed vehicles, swamp buggies, as well as motor homes and campers. So right now, we have not amended that definition. Everything remains the same, except we have added just to the list of examples of recreational vehicles. We've added low-speed vehicles and personal watercraft, and that remains the same from first reading. A lot of what was done with the ordinance was reorganizational in nature. So while addressing the stated goal of trying to help code enforcement identify campers and those types of RVs that are being used contrary to what our code dictates, we also took the opportunity to reorganize it. So as I shared with you at first reading, when you have, when I started going through the code, there were a lot of things that we needed to read and reread. And so we wanted to simplify it. And so a lot of what we've done, most of what we've done frankly, is reorganize it in a fashion that makes it easier to the reader. But once it gets codified, hopefully that will be the case. Your current code provides where RVs can be parked or stored. It currently provides that they can be in any residentially zoned district. One of the things that we were asked to do was clarify what that meant. So we went ahead and did that and identified the actual zoning districts, which are R one A, R one B, et cetera. So that part is clear. We also, in an effort to assist, in an effort to assist with the enforcement mechanisms, our code enforcement staff requested that these RV, that the RV ordinance affects allow RVs to be parked or stored in sites that are actually developed. So the idea is, is you can't have an RV parked on a vacant lot. So we've now made that clear. Your current code also provides that RVs are to be parked in the rear or side yard of a property. They can't be in the front. However, there are some exceptions. And one of the exceptions that we added for first reading was to allow low-speed vehicles to be parked in the front, in the front driveway area. And for this reading, we've included a provision that I had inadvertently left out at first reading, which relates to, let me pull up this version, converted vans and pickup trucks with caps. And those are currently allowed in the front yard, so we've just transferred that language into this section of the proposed ordinance. As discussed at first reading, when parked in these designated off-street parking spaces, in other words, the driveways, the RV types described in this subsection don't count towards the quantity limits of another section. So your code currently provides in various parts how many RVs you could have overall. And so you'll see in the proposed ordinance, we've provided an entire section on the quantity of RVs that can be on a property. Overall, we've provided that you can have up to four RVs parked or stored on your property overall. And that's consistent with what your code currently has. And then we further defined that to say in the side yard, you could have one RV in a side yard. And in the rear yard, up to three recreational vehicles could be stored in the rear yard. All of that is what you currently have in your code. The distinction that was requested at first reading is that in order to achieve the stated purpose of identifying these campers and sleeping RVs, let's call them, that are being used contrary to the code, we did a limitation to provide that only one, and this was a change at first reading. Initially, we had that only one of those types of sleeping recreational vehicles could be stored on a property. So you could have up to four, but only one of these sleeping types. At first reading, we were asked to increase that to two on a property. So whether you have those set up, two in your rear yard or one on each side yard, you could only have two. Any questions on that so far?
I think we're good.
All right. And then, Mayor, one of the things that you, the council had specifically requested was that that limitation be as to those RVs, again, that are intended to be used for camping and sleeping outside of the city's jurisdiction. Okay. We talked about that. One of the changes between first and second reading, going up a little bit in the ordinance, was on setbacks. The existing code has sort of a. It doesn't talk about setbacks and in the way that we think about them, or at least Sylvia and I and people in in the zoning or construction industry might think of it. But it did say you could have RVs in certain parts. And so we've included, we had initially included that the setbacks would be three feet from basically any lot line except in the front where they would be prohibited. At first reading, after lots of discussion, we moved that to a zero setback, which is more consistent with what you have. The reason for the three-foot setback was initially to be a little closer to the zoning code in that you would have more space between the lot line and the structure. But we've left that now at zero. Something that was currently in your code and we've left the same is with respect to parking and storage within enclosed permanent structures. So RVs that are parked or stored within an enclosed structure have to meet all of your construction code, city ordinances, et cetera. But if they are parked, if you have your golf cart, for example, parked in your garage, that's an enclosed permanent structure, that doesn't count towards the four quantity limit that I just discussed. This is probably a big one and probably one that attracted lots of attention from the community. This, this was something that we included with respect to size limits on boats and personal watercraft. So the county code and other cities have a limit on what size boat or personal watercraft you can have on your property. So for first reading, we included that for discussion purposes only. Um, it's important, I, I know the council knows this, but the public may not appreciate that. It's the first time really that the five of you as elected officials are able to sit together and consider an ordinance. Um, so it, there are things that like this that were included for your consideration, but are not necessarily things that all of you agree with or none of you may agree with. So at first reading, it was pretty clear that none of you agreed with this one. So we eliminated the size limitations. Um, so there's no size limit on boats or personal watercraft or other RVs. It's just the other limitations of the code that are being proposed. Um, then we have a section just generally, again, including lots of regulations that you currently have. Um, but we also added a few things about, actually no, this section is, is some new, new things. Um, so one of the things that we wanted to make clear is that if Florida law requires your RV type to have a vehicle registration or license plate, it needs to have that when it's parked or stored on your property. Boats, personal watercraft and vessels of any type would need to be stored on a trailer at all times. Um, that's part of your code. Um, we also provided that RVs have to be secured so that in the event of a storm, you have that security. And then one of the things that also attracted, um, some attention was how long you could have your RV in the front or side of your property for the purpose of loading and unloading. And so we heard some feedback that it may take more than two hours, as was initially proposed at first reading, to load or unload your RV. So we increased that to no more than twenty-four hours in a forty-eight hour period. So in other words, if for the purpose of loading or unloading your RV, you need to have it in the front or side of your property, you can do that so long as it doesn't pass twenty-four hours in a forty-eight hour period. And then we eliminated for this reading, uh, the concept of having the city manager or his or her designee authorizing additional overnight parking because that would no longer be needed based on that change. Um, RVs will continue to need to be screened from adjacent properties and streets. That's a requirement that you currently have and it remains in the code. Uh, we've just made the reference that now RVs have to be screened consistent with the requirements of your recently, um, amended hedges and fences section. Uh, but it is clear that they will continue to be properly screened from adjacent properties and streets. Again, that's what you currently have. Uh, you also currently have the requirement that an RV has to be. Yes.
Have a question.
Sure.
Um, I was enlightened in the last meeting, a lot about, uh, uh, these vehicles and, and all the preparations and things, and congratulations to all of you who have them. That's great. Um, my understanding about the time limit in terms of, um, you know, you, you mentioned loading and unloading, but, uh, I think there were other parts of, of the preparation that require time. So it's, you know, lo- loading, well, I, I thought I heard cleaning, right? And getting it ready, you know, putting all the bedding in or whatever. Um, and, and I just want to make sure that that's kind of understood in the, in the wording, that that's all part of preparing the vehicle for, uh, whatever you're going to do with it. And the same thing coming back. That, uh, it's, it's, you know, it's, uh, someone, uh, called me, uh, a couple of days after the last meeting and said, you know, there's also time, you know, to, he has a vote and he says, you know, I gotta wash it down and whatever, whatever it needs to be done to prepare it to then be stored in the appropriate spot or space. I just want to make sure that that's clear in there, that there are no, you know, parentheses or whatever. It, it is that that's required to prepare a, a vehicle to, to be used and then, uh, preparing it for storage after use, if that's the right word or term, but just to make sure that that's in there and it's clear.
Okay.
Thank you.
Make a note of that. And I think we, we do have a separate section on, on cleaning and the time for that. I think it's addressed elsewhere.
Think we need a little bigger desk.
We, thank you. We, we do have a section on cleaning.
Okay, yeah. I, I, I think, I thought so, but I wasn't sure. That's why I asked.
Part of the requirements do require that you do maintain your RV in a clean.
Yes, yes, yes.
Presentable fashion.
Well, and, and we understood and we want to make sure that everyone understands.
Yeah, but if there is additional clarity needed on that section, we're happy to do that. Um, where was I? Okay, the owner less see requirements. This was something that was also discussed extensively at the first reading. So your code currently provides, uh, consistent with what Miami Dade County's code has, an RV that's parked or stored on the property has to be registered and owned by the person living at the property. You can't store your friend's, uh, RV at your property. It needs to be in your, in your name. Um, so we've retained that language, but we are eliminating language that you currently have in the code, which would allow a house guest to have the RV at your property for a period not to exceed fourteen days. And so there was discussion of, about that at first reading and how, uh, enforcement of that could prove problematic. So now it's a, it's, you, you're retaining the language that you had, which is it needs to belong to the owner or your tenant. And, and that was the change there. The maintenance requirements, um, are just all under a maintenance section. Again, this is all language that you had in the code. We also provide, we also moved some language related to variances. Um, there were two provisions that we've now housed under a variance section. Um, they were addressed in another part of the code, but really they're about variances. So we felt that it should be reorganized here. And these are important when you think about the quantities of RVs. Um, your existing code provides, and we've retained this language, that you cannot get to park or store, uh, more than three RVs in the rear yard. And I'll just read it. In no eventual, a landowner's inability to park or store three RVs in the rear yard entitles such landowners to any special consideration for the granting of a rear or side yard variance to park or store an additional RV. So just because you want for more than four, more than three RVs in your rear yard does not mean you can seek a variance to have more on the side yards. Um, in addition, we're, again, language that you currently have, no variance would allow the parking or storage of more than one RV in the side yard. So that's consistent. And then we get to sort of towards the end, um, a prohibit, a prohibition section of the code. So we've maintained the language that prohibits RVs of, for being used as sleeping or living quarters in the city, but we've enhanced how to identify who's using those for, for that purpose. So, um, your code currently has that you cannot use them for camping, storage of size, area or water-related activities or any commercial purpose in the city. We've now housed that under this section. Vice Mayor's point about maintenance, actually, this is not your point. This is something that you have in your code as well currently, that RVs can't be, um, stored or parked in a state of disrepair. Uh, you previously had in the code that it could be for, we've reduced that timeframe for, to fourteen days, and there were no changes on that at first reading. One of the sections, um, and I think one of you had a question about this at some point. You'll see that the ordinance provides that we're repealing section ninety-one dash O two, which relates to parking or storing on public property. Uh, that section was sort of floating in a different part of the code altogether, unrelated to RVs. And so we've now housed that prohibition in this section. Uh, so it's not that we're allowing it. We're just moving that regulation or rather prohibition to this section of the code. You did have a, a provision on, I'm sorry, this was a new provision, uh, that RVs will not be attached to any generator or service connection lines. And then after first reading, we added that that would include but not be limited to water, electrical and sewer, so that it's clear, um, that they cannot be attached to any of those except as may periodically be required to clean or otherwise maintain the recreational vehicle. So I think Vice Mayor, this goes to your point. That regulation was amended at first reading. We had provided that people could have one hour to be attached to one of those things in order to do, uh, you know, the cleaning or, or maintenance. Uh, after discussion, we increased that to twenty-four hours. Um, so if it's used, if it's attached to a generator or a service connection line for more than twenty-four hours, that's going to be basic evidence, prima facie evidence, that you are using it as living or sleeping, as sleeping or living quarters. Of course, at a hearing, the property owner could rebut that evidence and provide evidence to the contrary, but it's going to be basically assumed that if it's connected for more than that timeframe, it's being used as a sleeping quarter. Then two more things that were added also to address, um, well, one thing wa- was added to address the sleeping issue, which is that RVs cannot be parked or stored with their slide outs extended. And so that was again, something to help identify if they're being used for permanent living quarters. And again, we increased the time on that from one hour to twenty-four hours to provide that. Again, if you are, if you have your side outs extended for more than twenty-four hours, we are going to assume that you are using it as permanent living quarters and you can be cited. And then you would go to the hearing and, and it would be addressed at that point. Um, also to not have people flushing motors, uh, overnight, we've provided that motors need to be, uh, you can't flush them between sunset and sunrise. So over, no overnight flushing of the motors on an RV. And then something that we didn't discuss at first reading, but after the discussion that you did have, um, I did provide that the violations of, of RVs, if there's an irreparable or irreversible violation of this section of the code, I've added that the violation could go up to five thousand dollars. You currently have that any violation of this section of the code results in a fifty-dollar penalty. For first reading, we provided that a first violation would be two fifty and a second and subsequent violation would go up to five hundred. This provision is something that's authorized by state law. If you have something that you cannot fix, um, again, it's solely irre- irreparable or irreversible violations, then the city could seek and a magistrate could impose a fine up to five thousand dollars. Um, and so that would be in, in sort of egregious things that you just, you can't undo it. I think that covers everything. I'm happy to take questions from council. I can't emphasize enough, and I, I, I did an exercise myself of trying to see the existing code section, how it was renumbered. A lot of what's here looks like it's new because it's underlined and you've got a lot of strike through. But a lot of it just got transferred to new headings and things like that. So there's actually very little that's new.
To the chair. Yes, go ahead.
Are we still on the local planning?
Well, this is what I, um, do you have a quick question or is it more, because this is what I'm going to suggest. Um, it's seven ten and we need to start, we, we can continue with this and then delay our regular, um, meeting, but we have some people, let me ask, the, the yard of the month. It's the yard of the month, um, here. Okay. And then the other one is, um, the employee service award recognition. We have the employee here for that, J C. Okay. All right. So I really don't want to keep the employee that's going to receive the award waiting while we go through all this. So what I'd like to do with the council's permission is, um, pause.
Recess.
Recess the, the LPA. We'll start a regular meeting just to get through these first three things of, you know, or two or three things, and then we'll be right where we are with the.
Okay.
So we'll be putting in the LPA, basically where the resolutions and second readings would be. If that's all right with everyone, we'll continue. And then for those of you that are here, I know you want to, this is a public hearing. So we'll have your time to speak, please. You're each going to have two minutes to speak. So start, you know, thinking about how you want to, um, uh, to address this. Um, we're all ears for that. We are all listening. Um, so be patient, just a few minutes. We're going to pause. What do I do with the LPA? Just pause it? Just say we're pausing it?
We can do a motion to recess the LPA.
Okay.
And, um, when you're ready to get back to it, we can do that.
Okay. All right. So just be patient one minute, uh, a few minutes. All right. So a motion to recess. Yes, sir. And second?
I'll second up.
Any discussion? Call the vote, please.
Vice Mayor Vasquez?
Yes.
Councilman Santin?
Yes.
Councilwoman Bravo?
Yes.
Councilman Fahad? Mayor Mitchell?
Yes.
The motion carries.
All right. Thank you. Okay. So, um, let's start the regular meeting. Call the roll, please.
Mayor Mitchell?
Here.
Vice Mayor Vasquez?
Here.
Councilman Santin?
Here.
Councilwoman Bravo?
Here.
Councilman Fahad? There is a quorum present.
All right. Thank you. Please rise if you are able for the invocation by Councilman Victor Vasquez.
Heavenly Father, as we gather here today, we humbly ask for your presence and guidance in our deliberations. May we listen to one another with open hearts and minds and may our decisions reflect your will. Grant us wisdom and discernment as we work together to achieve the best outcome for all involved. In your name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united in its own.
All right. Thank you. Welcome everyone to our regular council meeting of Monday, February tenth. It's nice to see so many smiling faces in the audience. We usually don't have that many of you joining us. So, um, welcome. And for those of you that are joining us virtually, it's nice to have you with us. So let's get to, um, for the agenda order of business, I would like to, um, uh, request that the approval of council minutes. We move that up under awards and presentations and that way we get it out of the way. Is that all right?
Also women had some.
We're going to get to that when we, um, go back to the LPA. No, not, I, I'm just going to move it to, I just want to move it up to, um, awards and presentations, under awards and presentation, so we can clean this.
Yes.
Up and leave the slate open for the other two ordinances.
Mayor, and then if we can, um, on this agenda, items eight, B, C, and D, defer those, um, we'll do, we, we'd like to defer, and Sylvia just reminded me, we'd like to defer eight B as to the employee manual and eight C to the February twenty-fourth meeting. And we'd like to defer eight D as in David on the driveways to the first March meeting. I forget the date of that. It's March.
The tenth.
March tenth. And that deferral, um, I know you'll discuss when we reopen the LPA, we'll, we'll discuss the RVs. I don't want the public to be worried. We are going to be discussing RVs and driveways tonight. Um, it's just, they will not be adopted tonight. We're, we're seeking a deferral for notice reasons.
And it's because of notice with the state of Florida has put in new requirements as to the notification. So it delays the second reading. Okay.
Correct. Um, so those.
Council agree with those changes? All right. So let's go ahead and, um, do awards and presentations and we have, um, a presentation of the Miami Springs Employee Service Award recognizing Jesse Crumpler, our heavy equipment operator for the Public Works Department. Mr. Crumpler, you're here. Come on up, please. Um, for ten years of dedicated service to the city, cannot state enough. cannot state enough how much our Public Works employees and we have Juan Penna, uh the Director of Public Works here. Also, how much our Public Works employees keep our city humming behind the scenes, during the scenes, but way behind the scenes. Um it's, we're a hundred-year-old city. There's a lot of maintenance. There's a lot that needs to be done. As you can imagine, if some of you have older homes, imagine a city. Um and our Public Works employees are just um top-notch and um we thank you, Mr. Crumpler. I know um J C wants to say something.
Yes, uh Mayor, um and part of our, in the new tradition that we've started recently, um want to recognize our employees, bring them uh in front of the public so that, you know, they the residents can see that, you know, we are human beings and we work hard for for them. And Mr. Crumpler is uh being recognized for ten years of service uh to the city. He is a heavy equipment operator in the Public Works Department. Um and he's just a Valley member of our team and we we appreciate his ten years dedicated service. Uh that's something that's very unique in this city. Um we have a lot of employees that are here for a long time and they're committed to the city for 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 a long time. So we we appreciate the work that you do day in and day out and uh just want to recognize you and thank you.
We have we have a reward. Um, Mr.
Would you like to say a few words, Mr. Crumpler?
I'll be brief. Uh this is actually my second tour of duty with the City of Miami Springs. Uh I started here in the early two thousands and left in two thousand and eight uh to pursue other career opportunities and uh decided to come back. And I've been here ten years and I'm looking forward to my next ten. Thank you.
We're so happy to have you. Bond, would you like to say something about the Public Works Department and Mr. Crumpler?
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners. Uh in the short time that I've been here for the past uh eight months, uh Jesse has uh always shown the uh willingness to help and get the department going and get it uh cleaned up in his duties as a heavy equipment operator and never a complaint, just ready to go every morning and uh do his work as required.
Through the chair. I just I just have to repeat myself to to our new director, Juan and Mr. Crumpler. I I'm seeing the work. I love that there was pressure cleaning going on last week at the circles sidewalks in front of the businesses. They pressure clean the circle as well. You guys are cleaning up the city. So I see that and I really appreciate it. This side, yeah. I'm seeing that. I'm going to stay sitting down because I'm not feeling a hundred percent today. So.
That's perfect.
So this means years of service award. This award is proudly presented Jesse Crum- Jesse Crumpler, heavy equipment operator in recognition of ten years of exceptional service to the city. Your dedication and contributions have been instrumental in our success. Thank you for your commitment to excellence and congratulations on reaching the milestone of ten years of service. Plus, how many years was before?
Oh, wow. I'm going, I'll stand up.
And um you know, they hear complaints, but they don't hear the appreciation. So wave and smile and
Okay, I just want to announce that the Yard of the Month Award for February goes to Zen- Xenia Perez on uh one seventy-nine Morningside Drive. And the Yard of the Month is something that our Parks Board selects every month, acknowledging um beautiful yards throughout Miami Springs uh and encourages the rest of us to, you know, step it up and and make our yards beautiful. It beautifies our city. So we'll get the certificate of recognition to Ms. Perez. And if you have a chance this next month or anytime, drive by one seventy-nine Morningside and um preach, you know, view the beautiful yard. All right. Thank you so much. Okay, so let's move to um approval of council minutes for January twenty-seventh regular meeting. Do you have a motion?
Motion with its uh discussion, just to make some corrections.
Yes.
You already got them, right?
No, I wasn't aware.
So it was um on the recreational vehicle vote, that was four to one. On the off-street parking was also four to one. Which is, I'm sorry, let me reference this for you easier. So it's eleven B four one. Nine C four one.
I have four one on the.
You have. On which one?
After listing the amendments at the meeting, it says um.
That was correct. I think I'm confusing with the post. With the Instagram post. Okay, that's fine. And then here under um nine C, and it says amendments were under consideration for the second reading. It says increase the footage between properties from two and a half feet to five feet. And I think that that was actually a decrease. That's why I didn't vote in favor of that. It was to get closer uh to allow a setback of two and a half feet and instead of it was to decrease, to allow parking to go up to two and a half feet from the adjacent property line. I think it's reverse. Yeah, the change was to ensure that there were at least two and a half feet for the entirety of the driveway, including the the flare outs. So if you have flare outs, the flare out has to be set back two and a half feet at least, which means that your driveway would be set back five feet.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
On the discussion, I thought we were we're going to be able to build out a driveway up to two and a half feet from. I I I understand the the flare outs. But to to build a driveway out to two and a half feet from the adjacent property, which I didn't like.
No.
So that's not the case?
Um no, that that's still the case, but now the flare outs have to be two and a half feet.
No, my concern is not the flare outs. My concern was two and a half feet now from your neighboring property.
Yeah.
Which, I mean, I I think most of us like more of the green space.
I I understand, but we're talking about the minutes right now.
Right. Okay, we'll get into discussion afterwards.
I think that that will be better.
Well, just for clarification, I think that it still needs to be fixed because it's actually uh unless we're talking about flare out, I think the verbiage should have flare out two and a half feet.
To add flare out?
I would, because here it's just it it's kind of, but.
I'd have to review the
That's fine.
To make sure that.
That's fine.
Anything else, Councilman?
No, that's it. Thank you.
Okay. Do I have a first and a second? For the to approve the minutes?
Make a motion to approve the uh the minutes.
Okay. Any more discussion? Call the vote, please.
Vice Mayor Vasquez?
Aye.
Councilman Santin?
Yes.
Councilwoman Bravo?
Yes.
Councilman Fahad?
Yes.
Yes.
The motion carries.
All right. Thank you. All right. Um now I would like the council's consent to pause a regular meeting and return to the L P A. Is that the correct procedure, Heidi?
We would recess this meeting and return to the L P A to discuss the driveway ordinance and
And the recreational vehicle.
Vehicle ordinance. Um and then when we come back to the regular council meeting, we'll be hearing the variance on uh two forty-nine Linwood. And then the rest of the agenda would just be the consent agenda and whatever remains.
Okay, uh the variance on two forty-nine Linwood are um well, that that we have to get the recommendation from the committee and all. So okay, we'll set that aside. All right.
The board of adjustment heard that at six P M. this evening and recommended approval.
Okay. Um, let's go ahead and uh
Motion to recess.
Motion to recess the regular meeting and return to the paused L P A meeting.
Motion recess.
Second.
Okay, I'll save that up.
All right. Any discussion? Call the vote, please.
Vice Mayor Vasquez?
Yes.
Councilman Santin?
Yes.
Councilwoman Bravo?
Yes.
Councilman Fahad?
Yes.
Mayor Mitchell?
Yes.
The motion carries.
All right. Thank you. All right. Thank you for your patience. We're reopening. Um there's just certain procedures we need to follow. So we are reopening the L P A um Local Planning Agency meeting and we will, now that we have had a summary of where we are with the, this is for the recreational vehicle ordinance. We're going to open it up. I'll open it up for public hearings. Um anyone who wishes to speak on this, you can come up, speak two minutes. We'll have the timer on. When the timer goes off kindly, we have other people waiting to speak. So kindly, even if you're in the middle of a sentence, say thank you and step aside so we can listen to the next um uh person. Okay? So go ahead and we'll get started. State your your name and your address.
Mayor, and just for the record, um I do want to note that we do have quorum for the L P A meeting and all five council members are here with uh Councilman Fahad via Zoom.
Yes.
Thank you. And also um the meetings, the public hearings and the um open forum, it's one-way communication. I want to make that real clear. We're listening. You have all of us at one time listening to you. We're all ears, but it's one-way communication. You communicate to us. We don't respond. Later on, after we finish the public hearing, we'll have our discussion among us. Okay? So if you want to speak now, this is the time to speak. We don't open it later for additional comments. It's after that. It's our discussion. All right. So go ahead, please.
Good evening. Uh we are Michelle Aguilar and Rolando Gonzalez of three fifty-one Plover Avenue. As the council is aware, we do not support the proposed ordinance changes for several reasons. Like many other residents, many of are here present today. One of the reasons we purchased our home in this city was specifically for the ability to park our recreational vehicles on our property within the rules of the city ordinance. Based on those rules, we've made significant investments in both our property and home, as well as in our recreational vehicles. The new restrictions being proposed will cause unnecessary and unfair hardship for all residents who are in full compliance with the current ordinance. According to the memorandum from City Attorney Haiti Sarah, the primary purpose of the ordinance changes was to help enforce the city's existing prohibition on using recreational vehicles as sleeping or living quarters. The current ordinance clearly states that recreational vehicles shall not be permitted to be used as sleeping or living quarters or for any commercial purpose in the city. This language alone should be sufficient to enforce violations on those that are not in compliance. Our city is less than three square miles with less than fourteen thousand residents and approximately five thousand single-family homes. Minuscule in size compared to our neighboring cities. Code enforcement should be able to easily canvass the city to find potential offenders using our visas housing, follow up on leads or phone calls, conduct thorough investigations, gather evidence and issue violations accordingly. Additionally, the penalties for violating this section of the code should be substantial enough to deter repeat offenses. However, the council should not penalize the majority who are in full compliance for the actions of a few by implementing sweeping changes and adding restrictions that don't address the root cause. For example, if they were a persistent speeding problem in the city, would the council propose banning all cars from the city? Or would you simply focus on targeting the violators and issuing citations accordingly? Furthermore, the proposed ban on connecting an RV to electrical service is unreasonable and infringes on homeowners' rights. As previously mentioned, RV ownership is a significant investment and many manufacturers recommend keeping RVs plugged in to keep the A C running and prevent deterioration of the interior. Additionally, connecting an RV to electricity doesn't necessarily mean it is being used as living quarters. All functions of an RV except the A C run on twelve-volt battery power, meaning lights can be on without being connected to electricity. This proposed restriction does not effectively address the intent to curtail the unpermitted use of RVs being used as housing.
Thank you.
No, I'm sorry. Excuse me. We're we've got a lot to listen to, so um please hold your applause. This isn't uh uh entertainment. Okay? Thank you. All right. Who is next to speak? And I I want to ask whoever, if there's anyone else that wants to speak? Anyone else? Yes, sir. Come on up. And if there's someone after that, please line up. So sir, go on up, come on up. So you're next in line. Anyone else who wants to speak? Come on and and line up afterwards and then we'll close the public hearing. Yes, sir. State your name and address.
Good evening and thank you for your service. My name is Jose Amaro. I'm from ten thirty-one Hunting Lodge. Um I'm not going to take my full two minutes, but I wanted to concur on that spot. The investment of an RV is a very big investment. It does require maintenance, a dehumidifier, air conditioning. I had mine off for a long time because I didn't want to pay the electricity. Rats moved in. So I had to get a new air conditioner and I have to keep it. There's basic maintenance that is necessary and I don't use it for living. I have a special needs child. I can't go on vacation in hotels or places that normal people can because it's not safe. So making it that I can't maintain this investment so I can take care of my family is not the intention. I one hundred percent agree. We shouldn't be limiting them. Let's find a way to enforce it, but not take away from those of us that are in investment to take care of our children. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Good evening. My name is Luis Rodriguez, eleven sixty-one Starling Avenue. My concern is with the electrical power to the RVs. Not not all electrical power is for living. For example, inside the RVs, we have a carbon monoxide detector that when you run out of power is going to start chirping and bothering everybody around. That's for one of the things that we need the one hundred and twenty-seven volts. Okay. The other issue I want to point out is that some of us have to have extra gear to park our RV behind the the houses uh through the service uh uh alley, like a RV parking valet. When that breaks, we need to to get another. That's a seven hundred dollar uh dollars uh piece of equipment. Without that, personally, I cannot park mine because I have to push it backwards into my backyard. And that's the only thing that is going to have an attachment to the hitch to be able to roll it back. Okay? It broke mine o- o- for me one one time. There's no provision over here that uh allows for extra time for uh or waiting or ordering this piece of equipment so we can put it behind where it's supposed to be at. So I would like to see something like that and clarify by the hundred and twenty-seven uh volts electricity that it doesn't mean that it's going to be used for living quarters. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next.
Good evening. My name is Roger Rodriguez, two seven three Navajo Street. I do not own an RV, but I think the most important thing is just using common sense. Like this couple here, they're not using their RV as an efficiency. Um I think we just need to use common sense. People that have their RV, they need to leave it plugged in for the A C to run because if not, you get humidity and stuff. It just make it simple and 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 not make it so um complicated. You know, you see somebody using an RV as an efficiency, yeah, find them. Five thousand, ten thousand, whatever. But it's just common sense, people. I mean, you see people that have their RVs, they have it plugged in. That doesn't mean somebody's living in it. You know, it just, it's just common sense. We make a big deal out of things sometimes that just with ten, ten pair, um ten sentences, we can figure it out.
Thank you, sir.
My name is Neil Spangler, five forty-one Plover Ave. I'm a thirty-eight-year resident in Miami Springs. Through those thirty-eight years, most of them, I've owned an RV. Um currently, I have a forty-five thousand dollar investment in my backyard. If I can't plug it in, the sun kills it. Who's going to reimburse me for that? All the years that I've lived here. I live in this city because we have yards and we have the capability to have that. I mean, we're blessed to have a city where so many people. we're blessed to have a city where so many people have the income to be able to afford to have these recreational vehicles. Whether it's a boat, an L, L V S. Or whatever we call it, the golf carts and R Vs. If you start limiting us now and try to go back, you're punishing the majority for the actions of a few. And that just doesn't seem fair. And if you tell me I can't have electricity hooked up to my R V., who's gonna reimburse me? Because it's gonna fall apart. And this is what we use for our family to go camping and enjoy. We love going outdoors. But, you know, don't throw the baby out with the bathwater. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, uh, my name is Ronnie, fifty-two Flagler Drive. I just went for the record. I agree a hundred percent with this couple and everybody else. I purchased a home in Miami Springs because of the ability to park my boat there. You know, there's not so many roads like an apartment, stuff like this. And then also, I don't think the code should be changed or anything else. I don't agree with this fourteen days for somebody that it's it's not the owner of the R V. For example, my parents, they, they don't live here and then they have a R V. They when they come because I have like a year and a half boy and then my second boy was just born like a week ago. So they plan to stay here for more than fourteen days, like they live in Brazil. So they want to stay here for a month and then go to see my sisters in Canada. So they want to have, you know, the R V. Parked there for the comfort and stay there where they get grandkids. So I don't agree with that. So that's that's my point. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. There's anyone after this gentleman? Please line up.
Eric Devendorf, five forty-one Swan. I spoke at the last meeting. Um, I was interviewed today by Channel Six, came to my house, knocked on the door. Kind of surprise. Uh, they did a fly, if you watched the news tonight, they did a flyover showing the R Vs parked in Miami Springs and they stated they didn't see any R Vs hooked up. But they flew over on the west side of Springs. I don't know what's on the east side. The gentleman asked me what I thought about the ordinance. I stated I agree that we shouldn't have people living in R Vs. Once I, once before, I worked for the city higher police department. I dealt with the residents living, having R Vs for people to live in. And I definitely agree we need to do something about that. Second, we all have a substantial investment in boats, jet skis, a jet ski now is sixteen thousand dollars. R Vs are, like you said, forty-five thousand and up. Having the power hooked up, I learned the hard way. It's gonna cost me seven thousand dollars to have my R V. Reupholstered. Because I didn't have the A C. On and all, and it, it fell apart. So yes, it is, and that's my fault. But I don't think every, you know, the power hooked up, like I said, there's gotta be a way that we can get around that. We can prove that somebody's living in there. Obviously, they have it hooked up to sewer. They're living in their, it's somebody living in R V. Once again, like Michelle stated, the twelve volt, the lights are on with twelve volt system. So that having the power hooked up or not hooked up doesn't mean somebody's not living in it. A twelve volt system. Second, like I said on the news tonight, one apple doesn't spoil the bunch. You take the bad apple out and the bunch is still good. So we need to concentrate on just getting the bad apples out that are doing the uh, code violation with living in the R V. Outside of that, I still think that, you know, the two R V., the R V. Shouldn't be linked with trailers. Because I have, if a person has a boat and a camper, they want to go to the Keys because they can't afford a house in the Keys. It's over a million dollars. That they should be able to take their, have their boat and their R V. Tow it down to the Keys. They can afford a campsite for a week and
Thank you, sir. Anyone else?
Hi, I'm Linda Connor, five one five Cardinal Street. And while you are responsible residents, and I applaud you and, and some of the others, I did not have that. I had someone come and ask for a setback change and the city gave it to them. And that allowed them to move a trailer in using my wall. And they hooked it up to electric and a sewer line. My attorney came to look at it. He said, Linda, this, this guy is very dangerous. Be, be stay way away from him because he knows he's doing something illegal. Not only did that sewer line spill many times, which was a serious health problem, that the odor was terrible. I couldn't even take my garbage out. I had to go around to the alley. And he's very revengeful. And this, he had like five people living there. And they fought all the time. So there's other reasons for this, very serious health reasons. And, and I've talked to contractors and they said, explain this to me. And they said, you can't do that. You can't hook things up to a sewer line. Sewer lines are plotted throughout Dade County. And they can ruin all of them. So I've, I've asked different people to explain things to me through the year, whatever it took to get to this point. And I applaud each and every one of you for getting to this point. So the people that are responsible, I'm sorry, there are people living in them. There are people hooking them up to sewer lines. You don't want that in Miami Springs. You don't want Miami Springs to be a cock-a-house like I had next to me, a cock-a-city. We, we have a great city here. No, 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 you did a wonderful job. No, and I told you that when I first started, you know, but you, nobody wants that for our city. We, we want our city to, to grow.
Thank you.
And be healthy.
All right. Thank you so much. All right, I'm closing the public hearing. And uh we will open it up for discussion. Please, I'm gonna ask you to be respectful because again, this is our discussion. It is the only opportunity that we have to discuss. The information is provided to us and the information that we've assessed on our own. So um bear with us. You're, you're more than welcome to stay, but understand that it's now our discussion.
To the chairman.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so the reason I didn't vote in favor of the recreational um ordinance prior was because I was not in sync with, I think, one item. And for the record, I know there's a lot of people asking, who brought this item up for discussion? Primarily me, but we all had a concern. So I hope I answered your question. Um, my issue here is, and I understand that the council voted in one way, and we're not saying you can't have your recreational vehicles and maintain them. That's, that's your right. I'm trying to protect your rights as well as the rights of others and their quality of life. Okay, so we have to strike a balance. It can't just be all because I did this big investment. We get it. It's a big investment. Um, but also city matters change, right? So we adjust to these changes accordingly based on, on a demand. To be honest with you, a lot of people are in here and I only have two emails. Okay? One to keep, one to change, or one to strike a balance, like the, the young man that came here earlier from Hunting Lodge. I understand that there's necessities, but we're trying to um, strike a balance. At this point, my only concern really was because it was a concern of code compliance. How do they enforce the bad apple? Well, I can't enforce a bad apple if you're parking in the back, which at first I said, well, I want them in the back, but I'm like, you know what? It doesn't make sense. They should be in the front. Okay, where code compliance can address if there's a slide out. But I only wanted one motorhome coach. It had nothing to do with any particular R V. It was only the one that you can actually live in camping. I wanted to limit that to one towards the front. I don't care how many boats you have. I don't care how many trailers you have. I don't care. So long as it was just one motorhome livable, um, a potential livable recreational vehicle. That was it. I brought to the council many months ago, various, various pictures. I could share them today if you have them. I took the time because I don't like to just make up things because people like to bring stuff maybe and just, oh, because of one thing. And talking about apples in a bunch, I found a bunch of, uh, a bunch of apples. Are they bad? I don't know. I'm trying to get ahead of the problem so it doesn't become a problem if there's anything going on. So I know that the council decided on two um, of the following types of recreational vehicles. I wasn't getting into types as far as the, 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 the front. I just wanted the motorhome and the coach. And that was taken away um, in context. So now you can have two motorhomes on each side or in the rear or wherever.
Councilwoman, that was just at that reading. It's not final, right?
Final, okay, so.
We were, that was the first reading. So that's where we left it and now we're having this. So we're again
Discussion.
Absolutely.
Okay, perfect. Um, it's good to hear that because that was really my main concern. And if code compliance, like you say, if they need to do a better job, they can't do a better job if, 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 uh, you know, if we have two motorhomes on the property and we could park one in the front, one in the back, you're very limited. I mean, the average lot size here in Miami Springs is what? Nine thousand, five hundred for the most part, maybe six thou, six thousand, seven hundred, with the exception of maybe Pine Crest, you're running Hunting Lodge, you know? Um, so the ones that have those bigger lot sizes, you don't feel it, like the ones that have the smaller ones, right? That we're encroaching on people's um, rights of privacy. We had a discussion on the hedges. Oh, don't limit the high restrictions. And we didn't in the back because some people had um, privacy issues, which I understand. So if somebody has an R V. In the back, you know, I want the neighbor to have the twelve-foot hedges because that's the only way they could avoid it. Because what if you don't want to put up some hedges because it's too costly? Everything's an expense. But um, that was, that was my only, my only issue there with the, with the change. And I like the fact that we changed the L S Vs to be a, to be able to be parking outside in the front. I mean, we're trying to make things more accessible so you could travel around the city. I'm, I'm, I'm gonna have you park your golf cart, your L S V. In the back of your house. I mean, it makes no sense. And we also didn't include it as part of your four. Or did we? I don't think so. I think it's four excluding the L S V., which technically now you have five. And if you have a, a garage, you can have more.
Clarification, I think it's four. If the L S V. Is in front, it doesn't count toward the four.
Right.
Right? Is that so for my clarification?
It's on.
This is, and again, this was what we discussed at our first discussion, the purpose of, the purpose of our first hearing is so residents that we get to discuss it, residents know what we're planning to do, what we're thinking about doing it. And um, the purpose of the second reading is so that we have the opportunity to get input from residents and from our own, do our own research and um, massage, whatever's there. The L P A. Is a different component which gives us another opportunity before the second hearing to again um, work on these. And, and I just want to stress, we're doing this for the betterment of our community. That's our goal always, is to protect our community, protect our, our quality of life. And when we see, not when we see, when we get reports from complaints from residents, because I don't know how many are here, you know, fifty or so. Um, but we've got fourteen thousand residents. We get a lot of complaints from residents when things are going wrong. And when we get those, it's incumbent upon us to address them. And usually it happens because we're getting a bunch of them. I know you were getting a lot and I was getting a lot. And I don't, not to worry about the other council member. I'm sorry to, go ahead and continue. Did you have more on that?
Um, so as far as the, the variance portion, I don't know why we need uh, online three ten for the variances. I don't even know why we have, we need that section. Maybe just numbers four and five. I mean, because we don't even have setbacks or anything like that. I, I don't know what examples of a variance would apply if we don't really have um, many restrictions. Heidi.
So zoning codes have to provide a variance process. And this is setting forth what that process would look like with respect to R Vs. So um, we can make changes to it. Um, in the eight years that I've been working with the city, I've not once seen a variance to this section of the code. Um, I don't know if anyone historically has seen these. I know there was a comment tonight that there was a variance granted in the last year. I am not familiar with a, a variance to this section of the code. I don't know if perhaps there was a different type of variance um, that was granted to, that would sort of provide the space to store the, the recreational vehicle. Um, but.
Um, yeah, because the submission would be to the city department. I was wondering if we could change that to maybe the zoning and planning board?
Um, that, that's fine. We can, so what, what the councilman is referring to is that the applications for these variances, your code currently provides that those applications go to the city's building department. I believe our variances, our, our variance requests go through the zoning department, zoning department. So we can certainly
That correct, Sylvia?
Update that.
Yep.
That's fine. We can update that. That's not.
Um. I think that's, that's it. Those are my only two concerns because the whole point was to minimize the the motorhome because, you know, you couldn't have two on your property. You could have one in the back and one in the front. But if we're stressing that code compliance, it just needs to pick out the sour apples. I don't know how efficient that's gonna be them parking in the back. And it's really hard to park in the back, but hey, I mean, some people could do it. Um, so for me, uh, one motorhome coach in the front to the side is fine. I don't care if you have two boats on each side. I don't care. Like that, that's not really the concern. And then we already addressed the, the multifamilies, which is the R two. I didn't want recreational vehicles there, which Heidi already took off. Um, and I'm learning through you guys what it takes to maintain your recreational vehicles, but I also want to make sure that people are not um, the way that our, our ordinance is written now, they are using um, or trying to put in other types of vehicles that are not recreational vehicles and using the standing ordinance as a crutch to allow such. But we do have in our ordinance, another list of prohibited vehicles which we should also take a look at. So um, which is fine, but maybe others in the audience or in the city that don't, are not aware of what um, prohibited vehicles are, should take a look at that. Um, because that's, that's not gonna change. And that's it, mayor. I don't have any further comments.
Thank you, councilwoman. Anyone else? Uh, councilman, uh.
Yes, thank you, ma'am. Um, pardon if there's any envy of noise. Um, I'm gonna try to be polite. Uh, I appreciate what councilwoman said and you mentioned also, ma'am, that we have a responsibility to protect the body of life for all residents. Uh, I, I go back to what I said numerous times during the first meeting. Uh, the, the primary focus of us tackling this ordinance uh, was to make changes that would give code enforcement the tools necessary to be able to enforce bad actors that are using these recreational vehicles as living quarters. Uh, I think that the things that we voted on, uh, order one at the under first reading, uh, I think did that after hearing from more R V. Owners since then and this evening. Uh, I think that having an electrical connection, uh, although that could be a, a way for code enforcement, and I want to remind everybody, code enforcement isn't allowed to look over people's fences. They're also not allowed to use drones to do code enforcement. So it makes it a little tricky. But I think it's clear from listening to people that have uh, the expertise that uh, just having, having an electrical connection is necessary. And so, you know, we, we want, we want to make changes to the ordinance so that we can help code enforcement have the tools necessary to curtail those bad actors. But we don't want to do it if it's going to infringe on, you know, those uh, those owners of R Vs uh, that, you know, can, are campers. Uh, we don't want to do it uh, at the expense of them, their property being degraded. Uh, I think a couple of people mentioned, you know, having water and sewer connections, that can also be an indicator that we're living in there. And that isn't necessarily needed in order to maintain the inside uh, of the vehicles, of the R Vs. So uh, I, I think I'm in favor of restricting it to just water and sewer. Uh, and we give that to code enforcement as a tool to find those people that are using it in the ways that they shouldn't. Uh, and just in response to Councilwoman Bravo, we, at, at the end of first, uh, we, we debated vigorously about, you know, uh, how many uh, R Vs that can be used for living quarters. Uh, uh, are used, right? Because there was a limit for, we talked about one was proposed. Uh, but we settled on to a four-one vote, uh, limiting it, limiting it to two. Uh, I think that that is fair because there are a couple of people that have reached out to me that have said that they have two different types of R Vs. Uh, that's not three, it's not four, it's just two. I don't, I, I, I don't think that that you, is gonna make you any more likely to have somebody living in it and paying your rent. I don't think it's gonna make it any more difficult necessarily uh, for uh, for code enforcement. I think code enforcement, that's the job that they gotta do is they use the tools they have to try to catch those people. But if we are getting complaints, that's an excellent tool for our code enforcement to be able to crack down on it because they're getting complaints. And they can focus on those folks. So uh, I think everything we came to a consensus on in the first reading. I would, the only change, I think that it should be left at two, limit two R Vs that can be used as living quarters rather than one, because I think that's a little too restrictive and uh, rather than one, because I think that's a little too restrictive and uh, and really hurts people that uh already live here and have to. And I think that we should uh consider water and sewer connections, uh, restricting that uh more than a twenty-four hour period. Uh, but I think it's, it's obvious from listening to people to know that you gotta have, you gotta have a, a, a small electrical connection to keep the humidity out and keep your upholstery from being ruined inside. Uh, I think that that's, that's something that I would favor uh changing.
Thank you, Councilman. Yes, sir?
Um, I'm also in agreement with uh Councilman Fayette. Uh, I don't think we should put any time limit or even uh the use of electricity for uh, for our residents who are doing the things on the right thing. There's no need for that. We got, you know, like, like we said before, I think we need to consider that there's people out there that aren't doing the right thing, but that's what we have to do as neighbors. If we see something that we don't like, then, you know, go to code enforcement. We are trying to give them some tools. But overall, I don't think we need to start penalizing all the residents. So I definitely am in disagreement with the time limits. I also don't think we should have this thing with the cleaning and all this stuff in reference to the, the RVs in front of the, in front of the house. I just feel like you gotta need to be a good neighbor. You see someone is taking advantage of stuff, then at that point, I think, take the steps that we normally do, the same as efficiency. Um, so to me, I don't want no restrictions. I don't want uh any time limit, especially on electricity, electricity. I mean, you have to take out a permit. You're gonna put something in reference to a RV, I assume. So right there, right off the bat, you're giving uh, I mean, the art, the electricity has to be permanent to have the right electricity, correct? So I think that ultimately right there is giving an avenue to code enforcement to see that things are doing, are being done properly. So to me, um.
What did you say about electricity?
Well, the permit, electricity in the back of the house for the RVs, that has to have a, a permit. It doesn't, but we should probably.
You just connect a, an electric cord, yes.
Depending, I don't know, you guys, I don't have RVs. It's just a regular, okay, so if it's a regular outlet, but I'm, I'm not an RV guy, obviously, as you guys can tell. But if, I'm just saying, if you had to take an extra step and you obviously ask for a permit, if there's something that's needed.
Cord that you use.
And that's, that's simple as that, then please, then we don't need to give uh somebody a hard time about having it longer than twenty-four hours. Uh, so pardon me that I didn't know that, that part of the RV stuff, but I definitely don't think we should be limiting the time. And also the limit of, of the, of the, the specific RVs. Like, if we're gonna put four, it doesn't matter what kind of four are gonna be in the back. But the property owner, you know, they have the right. If they want to have four, three trailers, well, that's three trailers they want to have in the back. They want to have four, um, you know, golf carts. What's the big deal? It's their yard backyard. We already have all the other stuff with screening. We have uh, you know, enough stuff in there to protect anything else that we want, not to get out of hand. But to me, to limit the specific recreational vehicles in the backyard, I don't think we should. Those are two things. I don't think we should give time. And I don't think we should have a limit to the specific RVs.
Thank you, sir.
Um. Richard.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I, I just wanted to respond to uh um what both Councilwoman and Councilmen have raised. You know, seemed to me like two weeks ago, right? I'm being educated, all right? Because I don't have uh, I don't own any of these vehicles. I'm, not that I wish I did, you know, anyway. Um, that there was a focus on time in terms of getting vehicles ready, right? And I thought that was the focus. And now I'm hearing something a little different, which also makes sense, right? And I think that, you know, to the two, you know, to the, the, first of all, I'm glad you guys are here. You know, our, our phones are, our contact information is public. You need to be, you see something, they, you know, say something to us, right? So, and that's how this is supposed to work. That's why your participation is limited the way it is. And there are certain laws that how city council meetings are run, which I understand. I was used to sit on over there and understand how frustrating it is. So I think that one of the words that I heard, um, you know, most repeated, and I think that's what we're trying to do, is to do something that makes sense, right? Given a situation that we had to address, what, what makes sense to do, right? And, and I think that in, I think that's the spirit of what, what Councilman Fayette mentioned. And if I'm putting words in your mouth, Councilman, you can yell at me. Um, and, and so we're, we're, we're beyond the twenty-five, twenty-four hour element. I think there's some other things that have been raised that I think, I, I believe we need to, we need to consider. Um, I never gave it a lot of thought about how complicated these vehicles can be, right? And then how the maintenance of the vehicles, you know, I maintain my car and that's it. But uh, you know, the, these uh vehicles are different and they require a lot of difference and nuance. At the same time, we don't want uh folks to do what uh, you know, some of the other folks have said, you know? And I think the su- use of sewage and, 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 and water certainly is, i- if you can see it, right? If the, if the service officer can see it, notice it, a neighbor says, hey, you know, this is going on. Um, so we're, we're trying to do things and find a balance and not hurt people who are already doing stuff and limiting vehicles. You know, I can, I can, I can certainly live with that, but you know, can the neighbors, right? That's, that's another thing that we have to balance, right? Uh, so um, I like to, I like to, you know, look at these things a little bit more. These elements that have just been raised. Um, because I think that uh we need to strike a balance. And that's not always very easy to do, as all of you know, right? And so, um, and that's where I'm leaning. Thank you, Mary.
Thank you, sir. Okay, um, and again, I want to stress, we'll have our um second reading on this at the next meeting, so that gives us even more time um to hear from residents and to also um uh develop our own thoughts on this. I want to go back to the reason that this came about. And I know Councilwoman Bravo, you were getting a lot of complaints as was I of residents uh complaining about um RVs being used as, and you know, we have a housing shortage right now. That's the reality. Um, Hialeah was having such, this is this past year in twenty twenty-four, believe it or not, Hialeah um uh prohibited all RVs on their properties. That's it. None, not even one. Because they were having such a problem with RVs being used as living quarters. We're in a housing shortage, people are short of cl- cash, there's a lot of inflation. And so what's been happening throughout the city and spots throughout the city and um is RVs are parked there and while they're not being used, um, they're being rented out. It's extra income for the owner, um, you know, it's um, it's easy to do. Our code enforcement officers cannot go into someone's backyard or can't look over a fence. So this is coming from residents who are living next to these conditions, as we've mentioned, and are noticing um cars even coming in through the alley. They come in and out through the alley and that's where, you know, they park and they park next to the RV and then they take off. Um, some of the concerns um aren't, is that they're not even connecting to sewage. They're using electricity, but they can't connect to sewage. So what they're doing is dumping this, the, I don't know, the, what do you call it, the some you know, whatever, in the backyards and then using lye and other chemicals to mask the odor of it. Because that's the easiest thing, right? It's a temporary thing, you know, we're renting there, we can't connect to sewage. And that's happening in our city. So um, these are things that we need to address. They're growing in concern and they're gonna continue to grow in concern because of the housing uh crisis um and inflation. They're, they're not going to get better unless we put in something to assist our code enforcement officers to deal with the situations where these are recurring. We, and I haven't heard anything here that, you know, what was put in place, and, and again, this is massaged because it's the first reading. We ask our our city planner and our attorney to prepare something when there's an issue, and then we review it during the first reading. And that's the purpose of um. Um, the other thing I want to stress is that anytime any of you, even though you're only allowed to speak one time here, you can reach out to us independently. You know, after the meetings, um, last meeting went to almost midnight, so you may not want to wait that long. But um, you can reach out to us individually and talk to us. You can also reach out to the city manager. We're available twenty-four seven, as everyone knows. Um, so I have given a lot of thought since the first reading, since we have um, and I have heard from a lot of residents, the majority that I have heard from are not here because they're not uh, uh, recreation owners, RV owners. Um, they're living next to someone who is um abusing the privilege of, you know, having these vehicles on their property. Um, they feel uncomfortable bringing it up to, you know, because it's their resident, um, so they complain to us, but they don't want to be public about it, and I understand that. But um the concern is this, and I've given a lot of thought and I've heard from a lot of residents after this first reading went out of um and we're hearing from the ones that are here that are pro vehicles, but I've actually heard from a lot who are having complaint, uh, concerns. I think I agree with you, Councilwoman, that, and again, the purpose of us getting together is to protect something that is growing as an issue. And we can overlook it and just say, well, you know what? People have a right to do whatever. No, we're a city and we always aim to constantly improve. We're also, I want to remind everyone, a hundred-year-old city. Nothing is static in the city. It's constantly changing. We are constantly evolving. Codes that were put in place there in nineteen thirties, forties and fifties were updated sometimes, occasionally, sometimes in the seventies, eighties, and now af- after that, updated again. It just depends on issues when they come before us. And in a hundred-year-old city, you can be sure that there are always changes that are going to be made to the codes. Every city does it. But um particularly in a city where um conditions um were allowed and then they become a problem. And it's incumbent upon us, as unpopular as it might be, to address those issues and to put in parameters that address those issues and allowing for a quality life. I've said it before, no one is um more of a proponent of outdoor living in Florida than I am. I'm always encouraging everyone to be outdoors, you know, our recreation department, I want everything um to expand our recreation department constantly. We live in paradise and we should be able to enjoy it. Um, I know the rest of the council, I, my understanding, you haven't had bo- votes in RVs. We've had several, votes and RVs. And so I understand what you're going through. Um, we did have an RV, and I think I mentioned this at the last meeting, that we bought it, we parked it in the side of our house, and then it turned out it exceeded like two feet from the side of the house. And we got, this is before I was on the council, um, a citation saying it's not allowed because it exceeded too much. We had to park it at Medley. We had to find a parking for it at Medley because, and I kept going, but it's only two feet. And we even came to a meeting at the city council to, and basically that was it. Um, so I understand everything. I think one thing that has been clear is the uh, the, the need to, especially for the larger motorhomes, ours were never ones that we had to get, keep plugged in, to keep them plugged in. Um, that makes it difficult to enforce where they're living because what we get from a lot of complaints that I've received is the lights are on at ten o'clock at night, there's music going on, you know, from that um camper. You can tell people are talking in there. The code enforcement officer can't knock on the front door and say what's happening there, you know? There's, they're not allowed to. So we know that it's happening, it's being abused, they're used as living quarters. And the reason for the lighting was that if the lights are on at ten o'clock at night, every night, you know, and eleven o'clock, obviously it's being used as, or apparently it's being used as living quarters. Um, and I think that we need to remember that the whole purpose of this ordinance and Councilwoman Bravo, thank you for bringing it up to, you know, um, starting on it, is that code enforcement isn't able to enforce these. We're having a lot of issues where code enforcement, if it was easy for them to do, we wouldn't be here. We have codes and it's not allowed. Basically, it's not allowed to use living quarters. However, it's being abused and it's being abused in a growing number within the past two or three years. So I'm still waiting to hear how we're facilitating for code enforcement to enforce something that is a, is a problem. And I do want to go back to um, after giving it some thought, um, I agree, it should be one camp, one, one overnight vehicle per property. There, it's less likely if we're trying to, to make sure that something that's enforceable, um, one overnight vehicle, wherever they want to park it, you know, in the back, on the side, if it's allowed on the side. But one per property. Um, the other thing is the um registration. We talked about um, and again, we've had company, in fact, uh, just this past summer that come in, they're big RVs and they've come from Texas and some have come from um, I don't know, Kansas City and have stayed with us. They have to park their RV. They've taken it to a place in Hollywood and kept it there. They're staying with us, but their RV can't be in our front yard. And so they've had to park it and they've taken it to Hollywood because I guess it's less expensive to park than here in Dade County. And at the end of the week, when they're ready to leave, um, they go pick it up and they get it ready to go. These are all, and I understand, you know, it'd be nice to have, you know, your RV there for, you know, if your relatives come in, that's using it for living. It's not acceptable in our community because it leads for abuse. So I think one, and what I'm proposing is going back and agreeing with Councilwoman Bravo of one uh vehicle that is for overnight, can still be a total of boats, you know, or wha- whatever else, but one that's designated um that you can sleep in per property. As far as registration, we said that um, that only the owner or the tenant can be the one to have the vehicle there. And that is not just for the recreation vehicle. We have a lot of complaints, or I've received a lot of complaints of people who say, look, you can tell that they're renting out their property for people to park their boats there. Because I see families come on weekends, they pull up, they take the boat out, then they come back, clean the boat and they take off in their cars. And so, you know, again, it's a way for our neighbors to earn extra cash. I've got the space. You want to park your boat in my house, you know, on my property? Your camper and all this, you pay me. It's, it's not acceptable. It doesn't enhance our, our quality of life and it will dimension and diminish it and continue to diminish it unless we take action right now where we notice that this is happening. It's a growing concern to limit it. So I don't want to require registration of vehicles. Um, I think that's very cumbersome and cumbersome on our staff, but I would like to see something on this ordinance that says um, code enforcement may require for um the, the, to see the registration of the vehicle. So that it doesn't mean that they have to register it, but if it's questionable that they can require to see the registration of the vehicle and that's either the vehicle should be registered to, uh, well, it has to be registered to the person that lives there, whether it's the property owner or the tenant. So that they, if it becomes a problem, if it's questionable, that they can request to see that. And the other purpose for that too is that I'm hearing from residents that there are vehicles that are not really campers, but trucks that are being parked in properties and people are saying, but that's a camper. Oh, I use that for camping. And it's you, it's really not a camper. How do you dispute that unless you can see on the registration that this vehicle is, you know, uh, what it's listed of? I mean, if it's listed as a dump truck, then we know on the registration, you know, no matter how much you want to, you know, cover it up and, and say it's a camper, it's not a camper. So I think that those are two important ways that we would facilitate um, or um discourage abuse, which is only going to continue given the circumstances of the economy. Um, I was, I think three vehicles, three recreational vehicles on a property is sufficient instead of four, because again, I hearing from a lot of residents who say, you know, I'm looking out um, and it's like a parking lot. It might as well be, you know, I might as well be facing um, a parking lot, a storage facility with all the vehicles that are stored on this property. If we're not requiring that they be um, and, and if we don't require that they be screened completely, then it's true. Your neighbors are looking out. If you have four vehicles, you can imagine, and we're talking about some really large vehicles in some cases, you're looking at what looks like a storage facility, you know, if you were renting a storage facility in one of our adjoining cities. So um. The electricity, I think we had, we had talked about that this would be a good way for code enforcement to, you know, if it's only a certain number of hours, twenty-four hours to prepare the vehicle, but in hearing what we've heard from the residents, that doesn't seem practical. Um, we do live in a high humidity area and if you have the kind of recreational vehicle that needs to be, um, continually air-conditioned, um, or ventilated, um, mechanically ventilated, I think we have to provide for that. But that again, limits our ability to, for code enforcement. So tell me what we're putting in here that is facilitating code enforcement and, and our code enforcements, we, our city has three code enforcement officers. That's it. One on one side, one on the other side, and one for the commercial areas. And that's it. And we can hire more, but we have to increase taxes. So when, when I hear, you know, um, uh, residents say, well, code enforcement, they should see this, they should see this, um, a lot of our code enforcement work is coming from complaints. Residents who see something, they're experiencing something and they're saying, help me. This is, you know, it, it, we shouldn't have to live like this. This is what's happening, you know, in my neighborhood or on my block or next door or behind me. Um, and they're dealing with that and realistically, it would be wonderful if we had enough code enforcement officers that, you know, they could come up and down the streets and look all the time and, and work like that. That's not the case. So again, I'm asking, what are we doing? How, what, with the discussions that we've had, if we're allowing for the hookup of electric, which I can see the reason for it and I think it's reasonable, given what we've heard. Um, that was a major indicator, as, as Heidi had said, of evidence that it's being used as, uh, for living quarters.
Mayor.
Just saying that it's not sewer, signed it, uh, uh, not connected to sewer doesn't work because that's not what's happening in some cases. They're dumping it in the yard.
If I may, uh, just add a suggestion. It's one thing that I haven't heard mentioned here today. I heard it at the previous meeting, but the slide-outs. If we don't allow the slide-outs to be open, it makes it very difficult for anybody to live in there. So we can prohibit the slide-out from being open, um, and also prohibit them from connecting to any sewer, you know.
But a lot of, of recre- overnight vehicles, we, the ones we had, never had slide-outs. I mean, those are, tend to be larger ones, but, um,
We can still, I, I would still suggest.
I, I suggest that we should keep that in of not allowing slide-outs, but, um,
That, that language is there.
Okay. But again, I'm asking, what are we doing? Because the whole purpose of this ordinance was to, um, and in the process was to address the growing problems that we're having with recreational vehicles being used as living quarters throughout the city.
To the chair. When you're done, Mayor.
Yes, go ahead.
Um, so obviously water and sewer shouldn't be connected. I don't, from what I heard, I don't think you need to have that connected to maintain, um, your RV or your motorhome, right? Because we're trying to just eliminate the humidity and just the inside corrosion of the RV, correct? I mean, that's what I was understanding. So I'd be open to, I'm, I'm reading here that RVs equipped with, like you said, auxiliary batteries that can last up to twenty-four, maybe forty-eight hours until your battery taps out, right? So I guess you have a recharging period. I don't know. I don't know. Okay, so what I'm seeing is that maybe electrical, obviously I'd be on board with that because if they need to, you know, maintain, put some air on, get the humidity out. There's the dehumidifiers, but hey, I'm not going to tell you how to take care of your, your investment. You know what you need to do. Um, maybe have electrical times. I don't know how many hours of the day you need. I'm looking, you're saying no, but I don't know. It's, it's constant. Okay, um, so as far as electrical times, I don't know if that still is going to work for you, but I, I do think that we need to eliminate the water and sewer connection in its tot- in totality. I don't think that that's something that needs to be running or connected unless you're actually getting ready for a trip to like, you know, take care of your toilet, get ready for the trip, um, clean out your little pot, your, your pipes, whatever that takes.
Um, excuse me, Councilwoman, one second. JC and Tammy, how would code enforcement know that the water and, well, that's the sewage is being tapped into? There's no way to know.
Just thinking about it, it would be an illegal connection.
It's illegal connection in that.
Visually, you know, to make visual, observe, observe it visually and it would be difficult to do.
You'd have to look over someone's, into their backyard to see.
But we should have the verbiage in there because we're trying to, if we ever catch them, because you know, you're not going to catch everything. We're just trying to avoid that impact into our sewer system, into our water. So the city has stated here, it's forbidden, so if you are caught, there's repercussions. We're trying to, uh, eliminate or, uh, prevent a behavior from tapping into what we pay as residents and, and citizens our, our water bills, right? Um, that we pay according to whatever it is that we need to pay, but it's really the impact of the storm. The storm water and the sewage system. Because they're not being accounted for. They have, the house has a water meter, but the RV motorhome doesn't have a water meter, right? So I mean, um, there's going to be an impact here. I don't, I think.
It would show up as their water meter.
Right.
Whatever you're using.
Right, right.
But we don't read water meters.
We, no, no, no. What I'm saying is that if you're going to tap in your RV into the sewer, it's going to impact the, the, what was it that we spoke about? The, um,
Stormwater?
There was something that had to do that our city is set up with a certain amount of homes that is, is calculated and scaled to perform at the function of its capacity of the residents that we have. So we start tapping these exterior structures into the storm water system that it can infringe or.
You mean the sanitary sewer system?
Correct.
Yeah, yeah, you're, you're right. It would definitely increase if, look, if, if you have somebody living in, in a, two people, three people living in a mobile home, along with the residents that lived in the house, you're increasing the population of the city. You're, you're increasing the usage of the facilities of the city, whether it's sewer. You're drawing more water, you're increasing traffic in the city. So yes, there is that impact. So into your point is yes, it would increase the, I guess, the amount of sewage produced in our city.
Right, which we're not.
How much it is? I, I can't calculate that.
So, um, as far as electrical, I mean, it's going to be pretty hard. So we either put something in place for electrical times. I don't know if this is like a daily thing. I don't know if you need to be running it twenty-four hours every day.
I think it's pretty clear. My understanding is it needs to be, because depending on the motorhome and, and the humidity is, that's a valid concern. We all know that, you know, humidity, um, impacts, um, South Flor- you know, we live in South Florida. So, um, that's not, excuse me, please. So if we leave that in, again, that was a, a major facilitator for code enforcement to see when, you know, something is being used as living quarters. Um, I think it's reasonable to allow electricity to be hooked up based on what we're hearing. So then again, where is it that that we're giving code enforcement the ability to, other than say, I keep getting the complaints, but I, you know, there's nothing I can do. It's their backyard. The people have, you know, a right to come in and out of their backyard, to pull in and out of there, even, um, the alleyways are being used as the driveway for the person, um, living in the, in the RV, which you're allowed to use your alleyway to go in and out of your backyard.
Madam Mayor, I think Councilman ahead wanted to speak.
Councilman?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Um, so I think, I think you keep asking, uh, which I think is a valid question. What have we done? What have we put in to help give more tools to code enforcement? I think that Heidi would agree that we cleared up a lot of ambiguity in the language in the ordinance, uh, that was making it difficult, right? Uh, I think also the fact that we put increased fines is a big thing because it, you know, it hits them in the pocketbook more when they archive. Uh, I think that no slide-outs is a big thing. Um, so I think that those things, uh, and just, just to clarify, uh, because one of the RV owners mentioned, uh, one moment, this is a bathroom and snack right.
Sorry about that. Um, what I was going to mention is that, uh, one of the RV owners mentioned that, uh, the, the things inside the RVs run on twelve volt. They won't on, on batteries, like the kind you have in your boat and your car. That needs to have a trickle charger connected to it, which is a simple extension cord. But that, the trickle charger monitors the batteries and, and will trickle in power to recharge them. Um, and then it turns off so it doesn't overcharge them. So that, that's something that needs to be connected. It isn't always recharging the batteries, but it does always have to be connected. Um, so I think, I think I'm hearing that everybody's in agreement with that, you know, the electrical is something that, that needs to be connected so that we're not, you know, infringing on the people that are law-abiding citizens. Um, but, uh, what I would point out is limiting the RVs that are for living quarters to one, I don't see how that's helping. Like if they have two instead of one, I don't see how that, that is a tool for code enforcement. Like I, I think that, and saying that, okay, it looks like a storage facility if you have, uh, if you have more than one. Well, that's about aesthetics. Now, I, I don't feel like that has anything to do with what I think was the impetus of the whole, uh, the whole, uh, undertaking, which is what can we do to help curtail the people that are using it for living quarters? I think that with, uh, with increased fines, with not allowing slide-outs, I think we're clearing up the, uh, the ambiguous language that was in the code because from talking to Heidi, uh, like you couldn't even understand what the code was, uh, how they were defining the problem. So I think that that's a good start. Uh, but again, I can't, I, as much as I want to help code enforcement, uh, because I think it's, it's important. I think there are some people that are abusing, uh, but basically residents are going to have to call them out. I think that if we say, hey, you can't have water and sewer permanently hooked up, I think that that helps because if, if, uh, if, if we get a tip that somebody has it connected, that, that's an indicator that they may be using it that way. And then if we have that in the ordinance, then code enforcement can, can, you know, look into it and then maybe catch people doing it. Uh, I just, I, I think that, I, I always want to guard against overreach. If we're, if we're limiting to only one, uh, livable RV, I think that that's infringing on the rights of residents that already have more than one. Uh, and I think that, uh, you know, just like where, you know, when we were talking about setbacks in terms of how you park it, uh, that, 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 to me, I feel like, uh, the things that we have put in that I mentioned, I think, uh, helped a great deal without infringing on the law-abiding residents. And I think that we should, you know, stick to that.
Mayor? I'll tell you why, um, two RVs are an issue is, um, because what happens is, um, it's musical chair of, you know, this one, I'm just getting it ready. There's people living there and, and it seems like in some cases, that is what's happening is when there's two, one is their recreational vehicle, they bought a new recreational vehicle, they've kept the old one and they're renting it out. Um, and again, the water and sewer connection, I don't see how code enforces that. I, unless I'm missing something.
So Mayor, I, I've been communicate, I've, I've communicated with one of my partners who handles all of the code enforcement work for the city. Um, if there's a, well, we have restrictions, of course, on what code enforcement, how far into a property they can go and what they can observe. Um, if there's complaints from a neighbor, um, and I think there were some folks here tonight who shared that they've had certain issues with their neighbors. While the city can't go on and, and peep over the fence, the code enforcement directors and, excuse me, the code enforcement officers cannot do that. If we have a way to obtain the evidence in, by visiting the neighbor who is affected by this, we can work with that neighbor to create a case. Um, and so some of these things are challenging, like the service connection lines. But if I can, you know, if, if Erica, I'm just going to use us as an example, if Erica has an RV at her house and I have a two-story home and I can see that she has renters, you know, or, or someone living in that, um, on a permanent basis, if I call the city, the city can come to my property. If I give access to the city to come and see what's going on from a, from a viewpoint that perhaps wouldn't otherwise be accessible, then we can work with that homeowner, um, to make a case. Um, so it's not, i- it's not as straightforward as perhaps, uh, something that you can visually see just passing by, driving by, you see a dirty roof and you can cite somebody because that's clear. You have a dirty roof, driveway, et cetera. Um, but there are ways to make a case. And there are ways also, I, I wanted to note this. The way we've drafted this is that if, if you are connected to one of these things, it's evidence that you're using it in that way. But you can counter that evidence. And so I know we're, we're, we're not all lawyers here and I, and I get that, but that's why you go before the magistrate. And if you can, you know, the city has to prove its case and you have the ability to defend yourself. We don't, I, I know certainly none of the people here want to waste anyone's time and make people go to a code enforcement hearing unnecessarily. Um, so we want to be able to identify these things upfront and really have a good, good and strong case. But all is not lost if, for example, if you were to get a citation, you could have your, you, you would have your opportunity to be heard by the magistrate and present your case there. So I, I know we're really focused on, on making sure we get this absolutely right and, and that's, we should do that. But we also have sort of that backstop.
To the chair. That's, that's fair.
That's a good idea. I mean, if it's not much of a nuisance, a neighbor would allow you, I would think. You just have to keep them.
Yes, sir.
Confidential.
Yeah, I, I.
That's actually.
I'm sorry.
Prohibited?
Confidential complaints are no longer allowed in Florida.
That was a change. On a Florida statute, if there's actual, uh, a physical or a photo or, or, um, something that's, that's proven to be factual, I think that you can actually, I think we had this discussion many months back where, uh, the person that made the complaint, uh, remained anonymous. They can't remain anonymous without actual proof.
I don't remember that intricacy of this, of the law, but I do know that the state legislature.
I had to look into it because it happened to me.
Got it. Understood. Um, yeah, anonymity in code enforcement complaints is no longer, um, allowed by the state legislature. So I just wanted to make that clarification. And, and while I'm clarifying a couple of things, um, our, our neighboring city did not outlaw RVs. They adopted an ordinance and went through a process similar to what we're going through, uh, to enhance their abilities to enforce. So they, they do permit recreational vehicles of the camping type. They just have it regulated way, in ways very similar to what we're considering.
Thank you, Heidi. It was my understanding from speaking to their elected official that they had.
Yeah, un- unless.
That they had to be removed.
Speed.
Okay.
But as of last January, they had amended it, so.
So, did you have something, Councilman?
Also limited to one.
Yes.
Right.
Uh, and, and that is one of the, I know I've heard from some residents is, um, where, again, where these conditions are existing, but the, if we don't address them now where it's come to our attention that they're growing, this used to never be an issue. I've lived here forty-something years. It was never a problem and now it is. Um, if we don't address it now, um, it'll continue to get even bigger. But, excuse me, sir, please, if you need to talk or whatever, please step outside, okay? Thank you. No, I don't, I'm not looking at you. I'm hearing voices at whoever is talking. Thank you. Um, I lost my train of thought. Uh, the registration. Oh, that, that I was going to say that what I've gotten some complaints is some cases of someone who had a recreational vehicle, they bought a new one, they've kept the old one on property and now the old one is being rented out as, so they're using their new one. So they have two, they're using their new one, but the old one is, you know, as living quarters. And again, people are very resourceful. We're in hardship of economic times. So I understand the, you know, the desire or the temptation to perhaps, you know, do that when, when you can or when it seems like you can get away with it. Um, the other thing is the registration. I brought that up. What are the thoughts on that, on registration of not? What I said is, is not that anyone has to register their vehicle. I don't want to require them. I think that's cumbersome on them and on our city staff. But that there's something in our ordinance that says, um, and right now, because there isn't anything right now, Heidi, that would requ- require if, if there is, like I know some of the cases where someone has said it's, you know, they're using a moving truck and they're saying that it's a camper. Um, and they're parking it back there and they're saying it's a camper, that we can, that code enforcement can necessary require, um, uh, proof of registration. So on the registration, you can see what type of vehicle it is. And I, and I think we have something in the front that you can park up to seven, is it seven tons of a camper? Uh, how would you know that it's seven tons unless you can look at the, if that comes up?
And so there's two things. There's, there's specific types that are allowed to be in the front or in, in a paved driveway. Um, and those are based on tonnage. If code believes that they have a case, they can file the case. And as I was saying earlier, we, the, the owner can rebut what evidence we have. So if, if, if there's a, a trailer that someone or the example you just used, if someone's using something that looks like a.
A moving truck and they're using it as converted camper, but it's really a moving truck.
If it's really a moving truck and it's a commercial vehicle, then if the city has a good basis. If it's really a moving truck and it's a commercial vehicle, then if the city has a good basis, we can cite that for having a commercial vehicle. Uh, in, in violation of this portion of the code, it'll go to a hearing and a magistrate will consider the evidence that the city has to present. And the, uh, the property owner, uh, can provide their evidence and, you know, it'll, it'll go through that process.
I'm not sure with that process of what the city would present, other than saying it looks like. Wouldn't it be easier just to say? Because we're complicating it with having to go to a magistrate citing something, then having to go to the magistrate, the easier. Thing because we want to, you know, not inconvenience residents who it really is, you know, what, what they say that is. Of just, we look at the registration, the code enforcement can request, not, you're not. It's not something that, but they have the ability to request to see the registration to, um, resolve.
Confirm the type of.
Yes, confirm it. And then it doesn't have to go to a magistrate and through this whole thing of, you know, we're citing you and then you, you know, why would we be doing that? If it can be settled.
I'm sorry?
It's not what we're already doing with the owner-tenant requirement.
That, how do we, how do we verify that? That there is no registration. We're not requiring.
You can add that if you want.
Not, not necessarily requiring it, just the ability to ask for it and do it. And that solves it. And the majority of our residents are fighting and there's not a problem with that. But when, especially when you're getting a complaint from a resident. Um, we tell our residents, you know, that they're an important part of this community. Um, and, and as you know, um, they expect us to respond when they complain, not just, well, you know, there's nothing we can do about it. Um, if there is something that we can do about it, we should make it as simple as it is on both parties.
So Mayor, if that's something that the council would like, I can certainly. For it in a way to achieve that purpose.
I think that that would solve a lot of issues before having to go any further to a magistrate.
I agree. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Uh, you know, thinking about the, uh, the code enforcement officers that we have and the procedures that they follow. Um, given the situation, I know last year I heard about two different properties from neighbors who were complaining that. They were folks living in an RV. And I shared them with the city manager and, and so I just wondered, and I, I agree with you. I mean, I think it's important that. Enforcement is clear so that people know what procedures there are and that complaints are taken seriously and, and looked into. Um, and, and, and so what, what, what happens? This is a quick question, JC. What happens?
When, when, like, I'll give you an example. When you gave us those, um, we set it up with code so that they have to come by at night. To stand outside to see if they see any signs of life, signs of activity, lights on. Um, a lot of times those were met with, with negative results. I weren't able to see it. Um, but the neighbors continued saying, hey, they're there, they're there, they're there, you know? So, um, that's when we had a discussion, like, for example, in the cases that we've been seeing, the slide outs was a very important feature. Uh, of, of the proposed legislation. Because all of them had the slide outs out. And if we had something that says, hey, you can't have your slide outs, we didn't have to come at night. We can just, right during the day, you gotta put your slide out. Then they've been out for a week. You know, a longer than four, I can understand. Maybe when you're getting ready, you open it up, clean everything up. But if you see it there day in and day out, it's clearly a violation. So, um, I would like to see that in, uh, continue to stay in the ordinance. Cause I think that's gonna help us out with a significant number of cases. Um, but to answer your question, we had to come out at night and do our very best with what we had.
Thank you, sir.
Anything else?
I, I just wanna confirm if we're gonna stick with the one RV motorhome. Everything else, I guess, is fine.
I think we have to get a consensus on that. Heidi?
I, I, I would certainly like consensus for the second reading. Um, if I can just quickly go through what I think. The takeaways are, and I think that's the one point that there is still differences on. Um, so the limitation on quantity of the sleeping type of RVs. Um, we had started with one. At first reading, we increased it to two. Tonight I've heard. From a couple of you that you'd like to return to a one limit. And then I believe some of you would like to, uh, I. Councilman Fahad said to leave it at two. I think Councilman Centine said you would just eliminate that limitation altogether. If I understood you correctly, um, so that seems to be a, a point of, of.
Through the chair.
Disagreement. Thank you.
I mean, there's some of the, uh, but some of those sleeping campers, there's. Like I said, obviously already showed that I'm not an RV guy, but in reference to electricity, but. Aren't some of those campers that are also considered sleep out, like one of those pop-ups, you know? So if you have RV and you have one of those, that's already two, correct?
Yes.
I don't think that you should.
We're talking about.
I'm against, uh, I think it should be two.
Okay, should you put motorhomes and coaches? These are, we're talking about the big, big vehicles. What, the direction I, the, what I understood is the direction. Is that any of the recreational vehicle types that you are able to sleep in? Would be included in this limitation. So we don't have a size limit. So any type of motorhome, whether it's.
Intended for sleeping.
Correct.
That's intended for sleeping.
Yeah, I'm fine with that. I mean, I don't know why.
So that's clear on there, that we're talking about anything that's intended, any vehicle that's intended for sleeping.
We, we even added that explicitly.
Yes. Okay, so is that the only?
So.
Part that you're.
I need clarification on that one, on what, where the consensus is. Um, or what recommendation rather you'd like to make to yourselves as council. Um, I have, uh, Vice Mayor's comments about clarification on cleaning. Um, I don't know if after the discuss, the discussion and presentation, we need that clarification, but I've made it a note to look at that. Um, I also made a note about Mayor, the, the registration and providing the, the proof for, uh, upon request. Uh, overwhelmingly.
And the registration providing the proof upon request would also solve the issue of when we have, um, residents complaining saying. Look, the families are coming in and out, you know, they use the different cars, clearly another family. Um, that's pulling their boat, parking their boat here, parking their RV here and taking it. That, that helps clarify that it's the tenant or the property owner that's being used. It's not that the properties are being rented for a storage.
Um, overwhelmingly, the feedback tonight was that. We don't want to allow generators or service connection lines for water and sewer.
Mm-hmm.
But electrical would be okay. So we'll change that wording. Those are my takeaways. I, and there's been a lot of discussion over the last hour, but I think that it, that, that sums it up. I just need the direction on the quantity.
Okay, so.
Through the chair.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, we, we had quite a bit of discussion at the last meeting about quantity. And I'm where we, we left it last week, right? Two and two, uh, I, you know. For the benefit of the audience, right? You get to see government at work, right? You get to see what it is that we have to deal with, which is fine. That's what we ran for and that's what we got elected for. And within a couple of months, you're gonna have elections again. You have the opportunity to vote for people and lots of people are running and God bless them all. For, for stepping up. Um, and so in my head, I'm, I'm still with the. Where we were two weeks ago, based on the conversation that we had then. Um, I understand your concern, Mayor. But, um, you know, unless, just throw this out, I mean, unless we say. Uh, because I'm thinking about the residents that already have the vehicles, right? That's where my mind is, right? I can understand what we wanna project, but you know, I'm thinking about folks here tonight and those that came out the last time. You know, you know, a midway point to that would be, hey, this is what we're gonna do moving forward. And we grandfather in the ones that are there. And that, that would, uh, you know, take the burden off the current residents and then moving forward. You know, if you decide to change your vehicles or whatever, there's a new code. Or if you decide you wanna buy vehicles or people move in the city all the time, this is the new code. I would be happy with something like that, but, uh, otherwise I'm with the, you know, where we were last week with the two vehicles, so.
I think, uh, a suggestion that I have and I, I don't see how that would work with the, you know, and, and plus it's not fair, you know, my neighbor. You know, we're talking about recreation vehicles. We're not talking about a house and, and we do grandfather in certain things have been grandfathered in the city, um, throughout the years.
Not just advocating, I'm just saying.
But no, I understand. I think perhaps if we were to say one recreational vehicle is to allow sufficient time. For the ordinance to take effect with that. So it's not like immediately you have to get rid of, if you happen to have two. Um, overnight camp, we're talking about overnight sleeping vehicles. You'd have to get, uh, not get rid of it, find a place to park it. And that South Florida is full of that. Um, that you allow six months, you know, of time for reasonable amount of time for. Residents to make accommodations for something like that instead of, um, that, the. Excuse me. No, okay, please. I'm asking courtesy. If you'd like to s- s- talk, please go outside. Again, this is us. Okay, could you then go outside, please? If you, if you wanna say any comments outside, okay, thank you. And you can reach out to me anytime after the meeting or at any time we can discuss. Thank you so much for your courtesy. All right, um, so again, there's nothing that says that this has to go, um, immediately. It can be in a sufficient number, uh, time to allow residents to make accommodations for it. Sir, yes, Councilman Fahad?
Yeah, I just wanted to chime in again. Uh, I, I agree with what, uh, Councilman Vasquez said. Uh, I, with, with regard to the limit, again. Whether the difference between having one camper or, or one, uh, RV for living quarters versus two. That, that, I don't see what the direct link is between that and bad actors that are using it for, uh, for living quarters.
Right, right.
Because you don't need two campers in order to rent it out. If, if, you know, you only need one. And I think it would be disgraceful if we're going to make residents have to divest themselves of a fifty thousand dollar, uh, potentially investment. Uh, when there's, I, I don't see what the direct link is between having a second. And I would, I would remind everybody, it was open that you could have just a total of four, right? And we proposed one and last week we had a vigorous debate and we settled on two. I'm still there. I, I think that it would be, uh, horrible for us to, to make people have to get rid of their second camper. Uh, when there isn't a direct link that, you know, I, I, I don't see how that makes it easier for code enforcement. Uh, to catch the people that are bad actors. Thank you.
Through the chair. This is not just only for bad actors. This is for a couple of reasons and I'm gonna list them right now, okay? Um, cause I know that Walter had this, he wasn't understanding. So the key reasons for allow, for, for, against allowing multiple mobile homes on a, on a setback or, or on your property. Is one, impact property values, zoning regulations, aesthetic concerns, overcrowding. There could be utility challenges and privacy concerns. That's basically what it is. So I'm coming back to the quality of life. So there's two things happening here. Illegal actions and quality of life. How do we strike a balance? I'm not telling you you can't have anything. I mean, I, I, I'm very flexible. I mean, there's not even a side setback. So how do you even put a hedge for screening? You don't have space. You could put it all the way to the side of your fence. Right now you, you can't even do that. Um, so I'm on board with the changes that were proposed, but I think that for the sake of a little bit of balance, I mean. If you have two, two motorhomes on your ninety-five hundred square foot or less property, I, it's not my business what you do. But it, 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 it could become, uh, um, you know, a nuisance for others. You know, I pay taxes just like you. I don't want somebody on top of me. I'm sorry, I didn't move into a single-family house. So that I can have an RV on top of me and then you have lights on all day. What if my room is there? What if I don't wanna? You know, so it's just, we're not gonna meet everybody's needs. I'm trying to strike a balance and a lot of you are mad and furious, but changes do happen. Um, so I'm proposing the only change here. I, I'm okay with Maria. If you wanna ask for those registrations, it gives some teeth for, for code compliance, cause right now they're literally working blind. And then everybody's always commenting, oh, code compliance is, code compliance at, they're not enforcing, the city looks like crap, blah, blah, blah. But the reality of it is, we don't have a lot of teeth in a lot of these ordinances. So you wanna see your tax dollars at work, but then. A select few don't really care anymore and it doesn't work that way, okay? Um, so I think it's fair what we're doing. Um, I think most of you in here will be okay in this ordinance. Um, maybe a half you, not, not so much. I'm sorry. My position is to revert back to one, cause of the reasons that I listed here. I don't, you know, and then we're gonna, we're gonna allow two and then we're gonna allow a two and a half foot setback for, for. Making a driveway all the way up to two and a half fo- feet from your neighboring property. This is gonna become really crowded really quick. And you're gonna have, you know, less property. Um, or green space, should I say?
We don't have consensus on this.
Um.
So, if I can offer just a.
Need a motion on this for the LPA or is it?
So we can, we can, a few things. We can run, recommend approval of the ordinance as the LPA has, has drafted with these recommendations. Um, what I'm thinking is of coming back with some language to address the sort of competing viewpoints on registration. And, and grandfathering in of, of RVs. Um, I, I don't want to create more red tape. Um, and I, that, that's not the Miami Springs style. Um, so I wanna be, be true to that. But I also, I'm seeing that you, you are obviously concerned about a proliferation of RVs, the sleeping kind in people's properties. Um, so perhaps there's a way to do an education campaign about what the new ordinance provides. And have some kind of, of process, whether it's a registration process for existing property owners. Who have these to register with the city and provide their proof of, of ownership prior to whatever the effective date of this ordinance ends up being. And they can show that they, they have these RVs, they meet the code and so they're grandfathered in, so to speak. Um, or we can provide a different process, uh, to sort of achieve the same goal. Um, and then we'll still have to address whether you wanna limit the number of RVs. Um.
May I make a suggestion?
Certain things, absolutely.
We had talked about last time that depending on the lot size, you could have up to two. And a lesser lot size, you could have one. Is that a compromise?
I was okay with that, but I don't think that.
Guy had said, was that over seventy-five hundred square feet, square foot lots. Um, we could possibly have two and, and thank you, Tammy, that was a great reminder. Miami-Dade County has limits, um, on these sorts of things. Um, based on five acres. Obviously, we don't have five acre lots here. Uh, but perhaps we could consider some sort of standard.
I really don't see the reason for that. It's, you know, then it's someone that has a bigger lot. They can go ahead and have two. Um, I think it comes back to the issue of, of abuse, of using these for sleeping quarters. Um, this is going to, again, like you're saying, this is going to only increase in, um, severity and, and. The number of instances based on what I've seen the past year or two, the complaints that I've gotten, which I never used to have those. Um. So I think it, you know, it, we just need to, and with all respect to Councilman Vasquez and all this grandfathering certain things in. And then, you know, new people, well, I bought it from someone who was grandfathered in. It just adds to confusion. It just has to be really clear and simple.
Mayor, if I may, I, I don't, I mean, I read the room. I didn't, I didn't think there was, uh, any consensus to do the, to do the grandfathering in. Um, at this point, I think, I think you guys are ready to make a re, I mean, it is what it is. Make a recommendation, make a vote. Um, it seems like it's kinda torn as far as the number of vehicles. I think that's the sticking point right there. The number of vehicles you're gonna allow. Uh, I, do you, do you want to vote, uh, like to make the recommendation?
Or just consensus for the number of vehicles? I think that is the only.
Motion to recommend. Um, and how about I try stating what the motion would be and then somebody could just make the, you know, make whatever I say. Um, so it would be a, a motion to recommend to the city council approval of the ordinance as drafted.
Give one second, Heidi, if you wouldn't mind just repeating it. Councilman Vasquez is back.
Councilman Vasquez, I'm, I'm proposing a motion that could be made. So the, so the motion could be to approve, the, the LPA would recommend to the city council to approve the ordinance as drafted for this reading, not the first reading, as drafted for tonight's reading. With modifications as discussed and summarized by myself previously, which are the, you know, the, the limit on vehicles is, is still open, but the clarifications on cleaning, the registration, providing proof of registration and eliminating the electrical connection prohibition. So if there's somebody who would like to make that motion to approve with those modifications, we can take about.
You're not putting in a modification for this number of vehicles?
I said that we're still open on that. So I think we can leave it as is and I can try to bring back language that hopefully addresses all of the interests.
Through the chair, I think the number of vehicles were okay. I think what we were trying to adjust was that one motor home. That, that part taken, right? Yeah, because I mean, I don't care. Right. And I think Vasquez, based on his grandfathering in, you were kind of leaning him back to that one. To kind of like reset that bar.
No, no, I was, I was where we were last week with this. But I was offering a possibility as one ways to, to grandfathering. That's one issue. I think that, Heidi mentioned the issue of footage, right? In other words, the size of lots and all that is, is, is something to, to take into consideration. So I'm, I would accept the, what she just said as a motion. Uh, with the caveat that we're still not there on the number of vehicles or size of vehicles. I think that's the one where we're sort of, and I asked Councilman Fahad to also chime in. I think that's the, where we don't have consensus, but we need to try to come up. In other words, approve all the discussion that we've had and, and with the caveat that we have to come back.
It sounds like you were for the two as based off the first reading, as was Councilman Santin and as was Councilman Fahad.
I think so. Councilman Santin said no.
No, no, but he then, he then clarified his preference and I know you're trying to provide options to bring us to a, a, a meeting point. But if you are at two and Councilman Santin had said eliminate it altogether, but he would live with two and Councilman Fahad is at two, then I think, I, I know it's not what.
Well, no, no, I wasn't asking, it's just.
The majority viewpoint on that would be two.
Two, we leave it at two for the next, for the second reading.
So if you, if you guys can just encapsulate that into one motion, somebody make a motion.
Motion of what I said earlier, uh, to approve, approve the, the, recommend approval of the ordinance as the LPA, as presented with the modifications to address registration, uh, eliminating electrical and, uh, clarifying the cleaning ability. Leaving the limitation to the sleeping RVs to two? We got a first from, uh, Councilman Fahad, possibly the vice mayor and a second. I, I heard both of them at the same.
Oh, I didn't hear. Councilman Fahad?
I'll defer to Councilman Fahad, but either way, it's fine with me.
Okay, we have a first and a second from, uh, Councilman Vasquez and Councilman Fahad, is that correct?
So moved, yeah.
All right, any discussion?
Through the chair, I just want to say I agree with all of the changes. And for clarification, I am not for multiple mobile homes. I promise you, we're gonna get more complaints, but I did what I could. And this is where we're at. I just hope I don't land with sandwiched between two mobile homes. And I hope that you don't get sandwiched between two mobile homes because I highly doubt that any future council, and I could buy my words, is gonna bring this up again. Councilwoman, okay, so I did what I could.
All right, and I am in agreement with you, um, of one, based on what I've heard from the community of one, uh, sleeping quarter.
Not, not to belabor the point, but if the concern is being sandwiched, would you be amenable to having two in the rear or two on one side?
The issue was for reinforcement, I, I code compliance, you know, how they're gonna go and know if something's happening in the back. I mean, I'm trying to make this easier for them.
I'm just trying to understand your point that you said if you're sandwiched. So I'm envisioning a property that has an interior, possibly two interior side, side yards. And has an RV on both sides.
But they can.
We brought up one on the side and one in the back and then someone made a big stink about putting it in the back. And so we kind of like brushed that off. But I'm very concerned and I know that there's people right now being sandwiched and it's really unfair. You know, it's, it's really, really unfair, especially some of these non-conforming properties that are positioned in the way that they're actually in the worst positions, uh, more than somebody with a, a bigger lot size. So it's just, uh, you know.
Okay, so, um, I think we have a first and a second. Let's call the vote and again, um, this will go for the second reading.
Sorry. Sorry if you don't like that, but, um, if what Heidi was proposing was you allow one RV mobile sleeper on the front side, side set. Since you're allowing two and then have one required in the back. Now, if you could fit it, great. If you can't, your lot size is maybe not that big enough for you to have two. But I, um, it's a good idea. Is that what you're proposing? So we're not sandwiched?
I think what I was, what I was thinking that you might consider is if you have more than one sleeping camper, it would be limited to one side yard. And the rear. So in other words, you couldn't have an, two sleeping campers, one on each side.
I'm in favor of that.
So I can think about that.
That's fair.
You have a motion.
I think we're, okay, well, let's just leave it as is.
Through the chair, we could change that from the second reading in reference to even what Tammy was mentioning about the square footage.
That's what the motion is saying.
No, but the lot will change. If, if it's a small lot, then you.
I can guarantee on hunting out, nobody has more than mobile. They're not doing that.
All right, any more discussion? Call the vote, please.
Vice Mayor Vasquez?
Yes.
Councilman Santin?
Yes.
Councilwoman Bravo?
No.
Councilman Fahad?
Yes.
Mayor Mitchell?
Yes.
The motion carries for the one.
And again, um, for those of you in the audience that came for this, this goes to a second reading at our next council meeting in two weeks. On the 24th, at the second reading, again, there can be changes. If you're impatient with this, this is the process and we do this process because we don't just say, oh, this looks good and sign off. You can see how much passion, um, dedication and thought we give to everything that we pass here at the council. It's hard work. It really is. And it's hard work to listen to everyone and try to come up with what you think is the best. Will never please everyone. We try really hard to do what is in the best interest of the city and the residents of the city. Okay, so the next, um, meeting on this at the second reading will be for, uh, February, this fourth Monday of the month.
I probably have to zoom in from the hospital.
I know.
Through the chair.
Have the camera, yes, sir.
I just wanted to reiterate something that you said earlier. And I know, I know how frustrating it is sometimes to be sitting there because I sat there and you want to say something. Call us, text us, you know, that's the way to do it, you know? I don't go to your house. I want to see the, those vehicles and I want to see someone who's sandwiched in. I want to see, you know, the issues that you've had with, uh, with someone, you know, living.
I also encourage you.
What did you call it? Caca? You know, that kind of, uh, because first of all, I'm very visual, so I have the, I have to see it, right? As my father used to say, yo tengo que verlo, para que no me cuenten, right? I have to see it. I mean, I just don't want to hear about it, so. Thank you, ma'am.
Okay, and I want to encourage everyone who's here. This is just one issue. We deal with numerous issues throughout the city. Get engaged, get involved. We're going to have elections coming soon. Be knowledgeable about everything that's, um, happening in your city. This is your city. You own it. So I encourage you to attend more meetings, to be here and, um, speak at public forum. And let us listen to your concerns, your input, your suggestions, okay? All right, so let's move on to, still at the LPA.
If I, I had a request and Sylvia had asked me if we can hear the Fujita, um, variance, if at all possible.
Yes, yes, you're right. This is going on for a long time. Okay, so we would have to pause the meeting again. Okay. We usually don't have an LPA before our city council meeting. All right, um, I mean, we usually don't have an LPA meeting at every city council meeting. All right, so, um, is there a consensus to pause? Do we need to take a vote?
Uh, to recess? Yeah, we took one last time, so.
Okay. So um, is there a vote to recess temporarily and we'll, um, have the regular council meeting and hear the variance? Yes, second, any discussion? All right, um, call the vote, please.
Vice Mayor Vasquez?
Yes.
Councilman Santin?
Yes.
Councilwoman Bravo?
Yes.
Councilman Fahad?
Yes.
Mayor Mitchell?
Yes.
The motion carries.
All right, thank you. We will reopen for another city council meeting of February 10th. And we are going to agenda item.
Eight A.
Eight A. Heidi, do you want to read that?
Um, this is a resolution of the mayor and city council of the city of Miami Springs, Florida approving, approving with conditions or denying a variance application by Rafael Fujita for property located at 249 Linwood Drive, Folio number 0530240020931 to permit one, a 27-foot front yard setback for a second story addition. Where a 30-foot front yard setback is required and two, a vertical extension of an existing non-conforming rear yard setback of approximately 20.8 feet where a 25-foot rear yard setback is required. Providing for conditions, providing for violations and providing for an effective date, mayor and council. Um, this variance request was heard by the board of adjustment at 6:00 PM this evening. Um, after hearing from the applicant and city staff, the board recommended approval with the conditions recommended by staff. Um, so the, the council, if you, if you would like, um, Sylvia can provide further feedback and the applicants are here. And otherwise you can make a motion to affirm the board's recommendation.
Okay, is there, um, any council member that wants Sylvia to give us a quick synopsis of it? I'm familiar with the property. I think we all are.
Yes, that's good. We had the.
All right.
The material last week.
And, uh, this was, we received, um, uh, approval from, or recommendation to approve this from the board that met prior to LPA. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve eight A, resolution eight A.
I second that motion.
Okay, any discussion?
Through the chair, I just had a question. It said here that it, there was two of the five structures that don't comply with the minimum setback requirement. But I think those structures are going to be removed according to the proposal. Which structures are those?
So, um, there are five accessory structures. As you know, we have a limit, uh, of three. But some of, some of the structures are actually, um, some of those not tied down, uh, storage kind of cabinets. Conversation with the applicant, he has committed to removing those as well as the, um, non-conforming metal roof, which is in the back, which is going to have to be removed to allow for the construction if this is approved. And, uh, we have included, uh, the removal of these, um, structures as a condition of permit for the variance.
It's nice. Any other discussion?
Okay, call the vote, please.
Vice Mayor Vasquez?
Yes.
Councilman Santin?
Yes.
Councilwoman Bravo?
Yes.
Councilman Fahad?
Did he sign off?
Oh, he did sign off, yes, yes. Mayor Mitchell?
Yes.
The motion carries.
All right. Thank you for your patience.
Oh, sorry, I thought, I thought it was their property. It's cute, it's really cute.
All right, um.
Sorry. Are you guys twins or?
Let's go ahead and, and while we're here, let's do the consent agenda. Does anyone have any item that they want to pull for discussion with the consent agenda?
Just to clarify, we've deferred A, B, C, and D.
Yes.
February 24th meeting.
Actually, one of them is for the March 10th. Eighteen.
One of them is for March 10th.
Driveway one is for March 10.
Eight B and eight C would be for the February 24th meeting, eight D would be for the March 10th meeting.
For notice, and they were for noticing requirements, um, there's a state statute that we, it requires a, we call it business impact estimate. It has to be noticed like 10 days prior to the meeting and.
For the employee handbook manual too.
Ordinances. All ordinances.
I'll be very busy at the hospital. We'll see.
Okay.
Okay.
So does anyone have any item they want to pull? Nine A, B, C. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve, um, resolutions nine A, B, and C.
Second, okay. Any discussion? Call the vote, please.
Oh, sorry, I'm sorry.
On A, just is the contract that we're just, because I didn't see the initial, the old agreement. It's just for one extra year at that fee?
One extra year.
Normally at this, with this kind of numbers, we don't ask.
Um, yeah, we will be asking for an RFP, uh, next year. But this, this is for one extra year and Omar, Omar had requested it and they're, he's satisfied with the job that they're doing. So we, we asked for an extra year.
Yeah, well, you mentioned those fees seem reasonable, but to me it seems pretty.
I've, I've, I've been out to bid, uh, well, I've been out to bid a number of times.
We can really find out, but at that, at that point, it might be too late because everybody's bidding higher, but at that point, maybe we'll have to hire two, two extra landscaping guys.
Okay. Okay, any other discussion? We have a first and a second. Call the vote, please. Vice Mayor Vasquez?
Yes.
Councilman Santin?
Yes.
Councilwoman Bravo?
Yes.
Mayor Mitchell?
Yes.
The motion carries.
All right. Thank you, um, and we have no other business. Let me just, so we can close out this meeting, not have to come back to it. Will we pause? Any reports or anything from, uh, city attorney? From our city manager?
No, mayor, not today.
From our assistant city manager. Okay, city clerk.
Just a reminder, um, uh, qualifying ends Friday, so just to let everyone know.
Qualifying if someone wants to run for the election. The election is April 1st.
Yes.
Mayor, I know this is a formality, but I, and I remember if in the regular meeting we held open forum, um, for anybody to speak, I don't recall if that was for the LPA and they spoke.
No, um, Ashley.
I don't think if anybody signed up, but.
Yeah, we skipped it.
Okay, let's do that. We don't have, we don't have anyone signed up, but I'll open it up if anyone would like to. You don't have to sign up if you would like to speak at open forum. And address us. Okay, anyone virtually, give them a moment or two in case someone's virtually to. Okay, anyone virtually, give them a moment or two in case someone's virtually to to raise their hand or whatever you do virtually.
Through the chair.
Yes.
I think best mayor would like to say a few comments at the podium. Okay, I just wanted to make sure.
Thank you, councilman.
Okay, no one signed up to speak? Okay, all right, then we'll close uh public forum. And uh city clerk, uh city council. Anyone in the city council? Councilman Santeen?
I can say a couple things. I just want to thank Miami Springs Virginia Gardens Soccer Club. I was able to make it just in time uh for their award ceremony. And back to the same thing we've always mentioned, our recreation programs are great. This is another one, reasons that is so great because they both collaborate. City Miami Springs and Virginia Gardens. So this nice plaque that I got earlier, it's an appreciation to our city and to our staff and recreation. So I thank them for their continued hard work. Uh and this is one of our definitely uh gems of a of a program for our city. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Councilwoman?
Um no, I just want to thank everybody for productive meeting. It was nice seeing a a full house. We were able to entertain some people tonight at least because it always feels like it goes down here. Um I just hope that, you know, um everything works out. I'm glad to see some of the the running mates here in the audience too, uh and they're here learning about what's going on in our city. Um I think that's about it for right now. Mayor, I just hope I can see you guys. Well, I'll see you guys next meeting. But hopefully in March, I can see you again.
We could hold the meeting at the hospital. If we ask. Say this is the councilwoman mover into a really big room or the cafeteria at the hospital or something. Jackie, we'll work on it. Don't worry.
It might be a little difficult. You get a turnout like tonight.
Erica, there's nothing that says meetings have to be at city hall, correct? No, okay. Open to the public, the cafeteria at the hospital.
Yeah, yeah.
I'm very dedicated. I try to do what I can and um you know, everything. I'm not doing a closeout because I still have another meeting, but I really, really enjoyed serving my community. It's been a true honor. I've learned so much, so much so that I said, get ready for me in two years. Not to serve on council. I'd probably work for the city, to be honest with you. It's really, really cool. It has a lot of dimensions, a lot of layers. Always room for improvement. I love the changes that we've we've done. Um I don't know, I think I found another skill set, maybe just in my head. Maybe you don't think so, but um it's been really, really, it's been fun. So they say, oh, you know, I I I I wear a lot of hats. I do a lot of things, right? Because in Miami, you can't, I mean, for me, growing up in a Cuban-American household, one source of income was just never enough not not to cut it in Miami. Um so just um I think I found a new. And a a new interest, a new interest. I just I I always like doing different things, so we'll see. But I just hope I make it to at least, you know, March tenth. That'll be good. And then I'll be turning forty-two.
How old? I ain't getting it.
Councilman, do you, Councilman uh Bahat? Councilman Bahat, do you have anything? Oh, he's off. Okay, Councilman uh Vasquez.
Yes, just a couple of quick things. Um eh and and I'm glad chief is still here. Um for for uh for a little bit of time, um I've been talking to the manager and 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 concerned with a little bit with the traffic pattern around Hook Street, Hook Square. Um as you all know, if you're leaving the city, you have to make that left to get up to get to the bridge and oftentimes people block that intersection. You know, they get in there and light turns red and anyone who's on South Royal coming north gets stuck and and uh I was very pleased to see a uh you know, public officer there.
Um. Every day.
You know, eh you know, because it's just to sit there with lights flashing and just a reminder because there's two big signs that said, don't block.
Did you see the nice video they put out today?
Yeah, no, no, I haven't seen the video, but.
Oh, yes.
I I um I I'm sorry I missed the, what was it called? The brew with the blue or something like that at the at that I I heard it went really well. I went to the one at the at the coffee shop, but um 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 good job. Uh and 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 to all the officers that are handling that. Um I went to visit the uh Venice Memorial Monument last week. Hadn't been by there in a while. They're still working on it. It's not ready, but they have laid down uh bricks, the people who bought bricks. So it's good to see mine there and and so forth. Um you know, they're they're moving right along. This this is gonna be really nice looking. Um and and Councilwoman Bravo, Bravo. What a brava.
Thank you.
And and I uh applaud your 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 the work that you do on the council and you know. And sometimes we don't agree and that's good. Right, that's good that we can have uh disagreements all in the name of the city and the residents of the city. Congratulations on that baby that's coming. I know those sisters are, you know, uh especially pleased and I imagine your hubby is too. So I will not be going to your to the hospital. At least not unannounced. Uh I I wish you well. I hope everything goes well in the next few weeks, whenever it is. Um you're a veteran, so it's not your first rodeo and God bless you and God bless your family. And and that everything goes smoothly and that you are, you know, can be back here or whatever. I appreciate the fact that you are considering, you know, coming back at some point. I don't think I am, but I'll be seventy-three in July. Next election, I'll be seventy-five. Man, you know, but God bless you.
Thank you. I felt that to 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 the core.
To 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 contribute, so um that's it for me.
Um I just want to say um the Historical Society, the Miami Springs Historical Society had their gala Saturday night at the Curtis Mansion and it was just, what a beautiful evening. Anything at the Curtis Mansion is gorgeous, but um the Historical Society, I want to thank them. All of the members of Historical Society, as I've said. Um they are our memory keepers. They are the volunteers. You know, we pride ourselves on being a historical city. But just saying we're historical or saying we're a hundred years old doesn't have a lot of meaning unless we have the artifacts, the history, the written history, the stories um that our volunteers at the Historical Society keep and and maintain and share with all of us. And they do a phenomenal job. Um I can't thank them enough. It's probably something um I I can't even imagine uh what would be lost without these volunteers and I want to encourage um younger people in our community, I mean, younger residents to consider uh being part of the Historical Society. Um you need to um, we need your help to continue the stories. Um preserve our history uh without the next generation stepping in. Um it's not gonna happen and we're um like I always say, Miami Springs, the best is yet to come. As good as our city is, I fully believe that our best days are still way ahead of us, so. Um and part of that is preserving our history, so um for those of you in the audience, but also those of you who are listening, please consider being members of the Historical Society. On another note. Um I was at um um the commission cham- uh Board of Commission Chambers this morning. Um there is a um an ordinance that is being proposed. It's gone through very fast. Um instead of going through the normal four-week cycle that it should. Um it was sped through so that um it was brought before the B C C last week and then this week it went to committee. Uh bypassing the normal four weeks for cities to um uh to see the impact, to be aware of it, to discuss it with their community and among cities. And it has to do with annexation. It is a moratorium on annexation for five years. However, the cities that have annexation in process, and there's several of them, are not impacted, so they continue to be able to proceed with their annexation. Cities like ours that might want to um start the process again for annexation are um will be impacted. It's unfortunate. It was proposed by our commissioner. Um it looks very likely from the committee meeting that I was at this morning that um well, the committee adopt uh approved it to go before the B C C. So it's likely to um it's disappointing, but it's likely to be approved. Um and the reason stated behind this is that the county is um facing severe budgetary shortfalls. Um according to our commissioner, it's um an emergency. Um because we were asking, you know, why the rush, but you know, evidently the county situation is so dire that it has to be rushed through quickly. Um and this will uh prevent annexation from other cities that aren't always already in the pipeline from a chi- at least applying for the next um five years, this moratorium. So I want everyone to be aware of that. Um. And with that, I will say.
One one thing I forgot. You reminded me uh when you talked about the Historical Society. Uh that's the reason I wasn't there is because my son Victor was his birthday and we took him out to dinner. And and also, um you know, he is a full-time student F I U, part-time worker in Mylar Marcus, so full disclosure, and is also a altar server at Blessed Trinity. And so they sang happy birthday to him on Sunday, which I thought was great. So anyway, thank you. Sorry, I forgot.
Happy birthday to him.
Since he's on full disclosure, I was at a wedding. I'll show you the pictures later. I would have been there too.
And where were you? And we'll just ask everyone. Why, you know, where exactly were you not on Saturday night at the Historical Society? Okay, um nothing else. This meeting is adjourned and we will now go back to our LPA meeting. Musical chairs. Okay, so um we will resume the LPA, local planning agency meeting, um agenda item three B. Which is has to do with driveways.
Um. I'll I'll go ahead and read the ordinance title. And this one is an ordinance of the city of Miami Springs, Florida, amending chapter one fifty zoning code of the city's code of ordinances by amending section one fifty dash oh zero zero two definitions and section one fifty dash zero one six off-street parking facilities, paving and drainage, lighting, landscaping and minimum up minimum number of off-street parking spaces, off-street parking requirements for single-family residential and duplex zoning districts. Relating to driveway design, vehicular parking and permeability requirements. Providing for conflicts, providing for separability, providing for codification and providing for an effective date. Um.
Hello again. Uh so at first reading, uh in your motion, there was direction for two specific uh changes that have been added to this version that you're looking at tonight. One had to do with the clarification that if you go to page five towards the top is line one thirty-four. Um the setback that we introduced requiring at least two and a half feet from adjoining properties applies to the flare outs as well. So we have clarified that and I threw in for good measure. Um a little graphic there to make it easier for people to understand what we mean, so if you don't have flare outs, which some driveways don't. Um you can go, you know, with the driveway straight through to the edge of the um of the street. Um at two and a half feet from the property line, if you have flare outs, then the setback is from the edge of the flare out to property line. So that will give you five feet for the rest of the of the driveway. So that was one of the two changes. The other one, which I think I misunderstood a little bit, mayor, but I did try to add uh the language regarding um plantings in the swale. And um I I don't know if you recalled that I said, let me see if there's some language in the code already that kind of takes care of that because in the back of my mind, I I remember seeing something, so I I went and looked and there is a section in the, not in the zoning code, but but elsewhere in the code of ordinances um that talks about the fact that um uh planting um plantings in 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 the public right of way and public property essentially. Uh only the city has the right to plant, to maintain, to prune, to trim, to remove any plantings that are in the public right of way essentially. And so I just added a reference there. I think I know from conversation with you that you wanted something a little more, which I actually um believe probably could be taken care of by adding some language into the covenant that people have to file when they get a permit for a driveway that specifically states there. If you have, if there's a tree in your swale and you put in a new driveway and the tree keeps growing and it damages the approach. Um the city will not, you know, remove.
Tree will not be.
Exactly. So um we mentioned this uh to Heidi and I think that we can make that change to the um the form of the covenant without even having to wait for this to happen. But that language can be tweaked in this uh section. Now, you will notice that there's more yellow that on on this um version of it than than those two changes. And the reason is because I heard the other concerns that you all discussed last time. And even though you did not necessarily direct me, directed me to make these changes, I I I tried to go back and add some clarity in those sections that were of concern. So um in addition to tweaking a few words here and there. Um I clarified, for example, the limitations on synthetic turf in the front yard. Uh specifically that it is not permitted as a landscape surface, surface in the front yard, but you can use it with a driveway only with, you know, between the joints, open joints that cannot be more than four inches uh in width, etc. Um I also uh tried to expand a little bit on the section on permeable materials. Um we talked about the fact that, you know, we don't have engineering staff to look at some of these things. So I tried to add some very specific standards that would be easy for us to review when people bring us the specifications for the materials that they're installing. And if they list you know, they list some of these things, then we know that they meet the code. And if they don't, you know, we can ask for clarification. Or if they just don't, then we can sell them. Um so we added some of those. Um. Let's see what else happened here. Um. Uh yes, um thinking about the um the different driveway types, um I went back and uh lowered the maximum imperious surface percentage for the circular driveways. And I think if you are in agreement um for second reading, I would like to tweak these percentages a little more. Uh maybe lower them slightly for all of the types so that we actually are steering people more towards using the permeable materials uh for driveways instead. Um sure, you still have the option of not doing a num uh eh uh eh not doing a permeable driveway, but in that case, you get you get less. Uh so um in this version, you'll see that I went from sixty to fifty percent for the circular driveway, which is pretty much the 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 largest one, but um yes.
I I think that the version that's online um on the agenda, it doesn't have all of the highlighted changes.
Oh.
So I'm I was trying to cross-reference this versus what you're saying and I don't think. We don't have that.
Is is it the right version?
I think so. I think it's the first reading version.
Oh, no. Did I, okay.
I so I I think it's okay, but just we're not following along.
I am I'm sorry about that. Um I I I know I sent it to Roger. I sent it to um I I don't know what happened.
I know we talked about it in the briefings as well, so I think everyone is.
There is a version that is generously highlighted in yellow with all the changes that I'm discussing. And I'm sorry that you don't have it in front of you. Um we will send it uh to you. Um but um uh the the last thing that I also did was to um. Uh, the the last thing that I also did was to um. To add some additional um definitions. Um, we had talked about different driveway types and sometimes it's 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 hard for people to sort of understand what we're talking about. So I added the definitions for for the circular driver, the linear driver, the ribbon driveway. I also added a definition for cell grid, which is that sort of plastic. Uh, cell um, uh, structure that gets filled with sand and and um gravel. Uh, that is a porous driveway. Um, it's also called a driveway grid or cellular paving system and it's one of the ways in which you can do a green driveway. Um, I added a definition for permeable payment. So that we now have these different terms included. And um. Um, I think those are the major changes that that I made from first to LPA. Um. Once you have your discussion and give me further direction, um, I also would like to um. Submit this to review. I already talked to Lisa's this morning and so to have his input as well as Juan Peñas on. On the issue of the the approaches, uh, that that's going to be my next step before we come back to second reading.
Thank you, Sylvia. Any questions? So. One of the things and you're saying that this can be by covenant is it's a very important to me that, you know, our trees in the swale, like we discussed, are living organisms. They're living, they're breathing and they're going to continue to grow. So that it's very clear that if someone puts in a driveway, the tree. Takes priority over a driveway. So even if. It's not affecting your driveway right now, the you know, the public part of your driveway. Um, in five years, it's likely the tree will grow, ten years even more, and it will eventually may. Um, could cause damage to your driveway. That's the owner's responsibility. The tree will not be removed. Our trees are living components of this community. Um, just like, you know, the residents. So that the covenant would clearly specify that and would.
So yeah, we already have a form that applicants for driveways have to. Uh, fill out and and authorize and provide record and and provide. A copy of what their driving permits that basically say. You know, you're you're in public property and the city is not responsible for, you know, damages that happen to your approach. If you put it here.
A tree city USA. If you move here, you're you know that.
So we can. Yeah, we can. We can add to that to make it clear that that refers to trees as well.
And then the reason that we're cutting back on the allowable amount so that you encourage permeability that if you want to make it a little bit bigger. You're using permeable materials, which, you know, allow for our groundwater recharge and um.
Right.
Reduce the amount of flooding.
Um, I'm I'm going to be working on like working out. What the reduction is for each one with my um, my my engineers to make sure that we don't. Cut back so much that the the driveway is rendered useless. Um, the idea is to again encourage people towards the permeable. Driveways, but if somebody doesn't want to do that, we still want it to be a.
Be able to have a driveway.
A useful driveway.
Okay. Um. Looks good. And I think the other thing Sylvia and you might have said it, but um, is if someone is using a gravel or pebble rock driveway. That they have to have a border around it to contain it because if not. Um, and and gravel and pebble rock is desirable. It's permeable. It allows the, you know, the the rainwater precipitation to go through. But it has to have a border around it. So it's not just, you know, you bring in a a dump truck and dump it in your driveway and then you can park your car there.
We can add that.
Yes, that's um to define that area. Okay.
So if you like, if you have consensus on the changes that you want me to make, you know, before a second, I would appreciate.
Okay. And why is this going to the March meeting instead of?
Because unfortunately I am out of town on the twenty fourth.
Okay.
And I'm not going to be able to join you even remotely.
Okay, I thought it had some state requirement of its driveway.
No, it's just.
It's just me. You know, the state is always preempting us from everything. So who knows?
It's just me.
Okay, all right, no problem. All right. Thank you, Sylvia. Any questions for Sylvia? All right. Thank you so much for working on that. I know it it seems. A simple, but it's a complicated, just like with the RVs, these um. And and Heidi and Sylvia, both of you um for working so diligently um with our staff. With Tammy, I know you've been involved with this and JC and um.
Yeah, driveway is a lot more tech technical than I think. That's why her expertise is really helpful.
Through the chair.
Yes, ma'am.
Question, um, because you mentioned that um. Property owners can't. Plant like hedges around trees on the public swale. Like, there's a lot of houses that are really nice and they do a really good job maintaining actually our swales. With some nice little, you know, low hedge foliages, maybe some orchids. It looks really nice. It does that affect them? Or if it's because it becomes like a problem, it's not maintained, it's not blocking a a vision because I hate to take away that little nice curb appeal that they're really giving the city.
There is language in the code already. Uh, it's not in this section. It's in another section of the code that basically says that only the city is responsible. And has the authority. For plantings. Uh, for the maintenance of plantings, for the um. Trimming, pruning, removal of plantings that are in the public right of way. Obviously, the swale is part of the public right of way. Uh, so I'm not touching that language at all. I'm just leaving it and just cross referencing here.
Okay, anything else? We can close the LPA?
I need a motion on that one.
A motion. Oh, you know what? No, we need to uh have a public hearing. On uh three B. We haven't had a public hearing on three B. So let's do that. Just the formality in case anyone wants to speak on three B. I'm opening. Public hearing. Step right up. Anyone virtually? Give them a moment just in case. I always have trouble when I'm on Zoom figuring out depending on the meeting, how do you raise your hand? Okay. Closing the public hearing. And then you need a motion. Is there a motion for uh to move forward with this with the changes? That we've discussed.
Through the chair. Mayor, make a motion. I'm just stuck on the the two and a half foot side setback. Um. Getting closer to the neighboring property. Other than that, I think it's a great ordinance. I just think if somebody wants to do a completely impervious driveway, they can go up to two and a half feet from. The neighboring property right now. It's kind of like it's nice to have that buffer between two homes. That's just my thought.
Any discussion on that?
Yeah, I guess.
And.
Sylvia, how does that affect, you know, because I I can understand her point of view. Obviously, you want to see a little bit more. Greenery and and act uh from the from the side side house, but. You know, how does that affect the possibility with all the stuff that we're already putting in place? Because. The driveway itself.
Mm hmm.
Does it affect those two and a half feet will all start to diminish the some of the requests that you're receiving out there?
The two and a half feet is about. The same and actually a little more than what has been the norm.
Good.
Uh, here. So we're actually.
Through the chair, through the chair. I'm sorry to interrupt you, but that is not the norm. I did my driveway and I I grew up here and that is not the norm. That's why I'm struggling to understand this because.
This is what.
I know, I know.
You know that this is what I've seen, what I've been told.
Yeah, to you and 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 but that I have to defer that 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 that's not the norm. So that's why I'm struggling to understand it.
Um. But you know, with that said, obviously the two and a half feet is a minimum, right? So if you're if you're trying to align your garage, your driveway with a garage that is seven feet from. The property line, you're not going to put your driveway two and a half feet. You're going to put it seven feet, right?
Right, but we're in the ordinance. We're giving people an option that they don't have to go up to their garage. They could go. Further out to their neighboring property from two and a half feet from the the lot line.
Yes, it is. It is true that that's the case. Um, because some people are configuring driveways in a different way, you know, some some are aligning with the garage, but leaving, you know, space for additional parking. Um, so, you know.
It's creating a concrete village and I think that that's mayor is trying to avoid that essentially.
Well, I think that's why we cut back on the um. Initial driveway allowances and then allow a little more for permeability, but we're cutting back. From what we proposed at the last meeting.
Mm hmm.
I I don't have a strong opinion one way or the other with that. You know, I don't feel like it has to be if you feel aesthetically, if you feel that, you know, that it's not reasonable. I can agree with you with that. I really don't have a strong opinion on that. I'm more concerned with the permeability and the um.
Me too.
Allowable levels of the the driveways. Does the rest of the council feel?
Yeah, yeah, I agree.
Make a make a motion and let's see if we second it.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion on, sorry, I don't even.
With the with the amendment.
With the amendment of the ordinance as said. Uh, remaining removing the two and a half foot. Um. Okay, so.
Five.
We have a seven side uh foot setback right now.
No, there's for driveways. For driveways, there's nothing in the books.
So what I see, if you if we want to come back to this, um. If you look around town.
See all of us in the cafeteria at the hospital.
I I see if you go just on my block alone, we're we're we have side setbacks of seven feet. Some have grandfathered in and they've already have, you know, they have like little that they've, which is fine. Nothing you could do about that. But now that we're setting a standard. The majority have a a seven foot setback. So the driveway ends where your drive where your. Your building, like where your your structure ends. Now you can still do a little, you know, walking path if you wanted to or whatever, but that that's that's very different from saying, hey, you can go ahead and. Concrete out up to two and a half feet from your neighbor. It's very, very different.
Right, so if we have the, um, what do you call it? The apron?
The flare out.
The flare out, two and a half feet, allowing it to go up to two and a half feet from your neighbor.
Yeah, that's normal.
And then then we're. Then we're talking about five feet away. I think that's reasonable.
I think so too.
But you but you could also have the driveway at the two and a half feet from your, right? So what you're saying, what I think you're saying is. The flares would be allowed.
Yeah.
But not the whole driveway, two and a half feet.
Okay. So you're making you're sticking to the.
Sylvia, you have concerns? I want to listen to your concerns with that.
I I just hesitate um. To make the change without studying the impact of doing that because I'm not entirely sure. What that's going to do to some um configurations, some lot configurations, some placement of uh. Buildings and garages and paths and all of that. Um. I I know that the two and a half feet is what we have been seeing.
And and it's not written.
Well, there's 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 nothing right now. There's nothing in the code. So we have, we have to put. Like, we have to ask for something because otherwise people would be paving up to the property line. And and we've seen people who want to do that. Um, so you know, we're kind of suggesting, all right, people are used to like us asking for at least two and a half feet and they're doing it. Um, so that's why. We have tried to incorporate that into a code because we know we know from the experience that that seems acceptable. Right? Um. But I haven't studied what pulling back more can do. That's my only concern. Um.
I know in my property, my flare out and my neighbor's flare out touch each other. And then there's a swell tree.
Right, so that that would be, yeah, that would be the situation where we had before the last meeting exchange. Where it's two and a half feet. From the driveway, but not taking into consideration the flare out. Now we're taking into consideration the flare. If you have that, you cannot go to the property line. You have to be set back the two and a half feet. Which means that your driveway is set set back five feet on your side. If your neighbor has one on the other side, it will have to be set back five feet. So that's a distance of ten feet between the driveways themselves. And five feet between the flare outs of two adjacent properties.
Mm hmm.
At least, right? So um.
Why don't you just come back? It was March, what, March tenth?
Yeah, I have I have time.
Come back with.
Well, and I suggest the council, which is what I do in between readings is, and I'll do it again with the the wreck vehicle readings, you know, before we go. I wanted to move it along, but you know, as you look, you listen to the residents, find out, you know, the situations that are happening and um take a look around the city and see. What's looks acceptable and what doesn't. Ultimately, whatever we decide, you know, that the goal is. That as we continue, that it keeps looking nicer and and um prettier. In this case, the permeability is really important to me, but. Um. That, you know, the driveways look nice, but they're that we're not a concrete. I mean, some of these driveways, it's just, it's appalling to me. You know, there's not a tree in sight. It's just a house with, you know, this concrete. Um.
Right up to the street.
It doesn't matter how nice the driveway is. It's very ugly.
I I think, and I I think and I hope and and from experience I've seen that. Tying the percentage to the type of driveway that you have and limiting it that way is gonna make a difference. Um. And um, some of the other limitations that we're putting in there, I think are going to also help. At least I hope.
Okay, does that seem?
Yeah, and through the chair to piggyback on you, mayor, um, for some owners that have, you know, um, already. A a tree on that side setback on their property, you can't tell them what to do or anything like that, but. Um, it would just make no sense to try to put a planting if you only have like two and a half feet.
Well, it depends. You certainly can put a hedge.
A hedge.
You can put a hedge.
Yeah.
Um.
I'm just trying to avoid the Shenandoah look, you know what I mean?
No, I understand.
No, it's 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 what it is.
The city doesn't have its own landscape ordinance, you know, we we have, we have, we have some, some. Some provisions, but primarily relies on Miami-Dade County. Um. But there's there's no requirement for street trees or anything like that. Right now, and I didn't want to delve into that because then, you know, we start going down the rabbit hole and, you know, I was just like very focused on just the section. And the issue of driveways and permeability.
And protecting the tree swales.
Well.
The trees that are swale right now.
Yes. Okay.
Thank you, Sylvia.
Um, all right, so. Is there a motion? Somebody has to make a motion or not?
The motion, but she started.
Well, I think you backed up. No, you're okay.
I'm okay with 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 how it's it's stated, just we need to figure out the side setback. I'd love to do that now because I'd like to get this passed, but I know this is something that you've wanted to see um come to light. Um. I just don't know, you know, I'm stuck on seven, but I could be wrong. Maybe five is the good number, but I know two and a half is not for me. So. It's kind of hard to.
I think, can I just clarify why I have some concern about the impact of setting the the number today? Because remember that our our side setback is ten percent of your property line. So if you have a fifty foot setback. Your setback is not seven, it's five feet. So that could mean then that if your garage is on the side and you have your setback of five feet. You might end up with a misaligned. Side um driveway, right? So that's why I want to maybe go back and look at that and see whether maybe that. Needs to be also a percentage or, you know, I don't I I don't know yet.
Okay.
I'm sorry, I'm a little tired. My brain is starting to shut down. Uh, but um, I I I have that little concern. So it's not seven, the minimum is five and that's for a fifty foot set um lot?
Maybe it shouldn't be um a foot. Maybe it should be a percentage because that's what they've been practicing. That's why I see a very um uniform.
Starting to think, but I I kind of want to see, you know, I. I want to I want to evaluate some examples.
Okay. So how about is the council okay with either Councilwoman Bravo? I know you started the motion. If you don't feel comfortable doing it, someone else. But that we move forward um to the second reading and you'll come back with a proposal considering that.
Yes.
Okay. All right. Do you want to make that since you started the motion?
Sure. Heidi, how do you want me to say it? Because I'm going to start here and end up here.
What did you say?
To approve it.
Okay, approve it with the with the understanding that Sylvia is going to look into the considerations. I think we all feel comfortable with allowing. More space, the setback, if it um works with the alignment.
So this doesn't steal the second reading right now. Does it?
The LPA. We're going to.
Okay yeah so I'll make a motion um to approve the. To recommend. The ordinance for off street parking facilities with the recommendations of zoning of mayor. And clarification on side setback. Is that good enough? Or a def uh. Clarification or definition of what the side setback would be.
I'll second it.
Any discussion? Call a vote please Vice Mayor Vasquez.
Yes.
Councilman Santeen.
Yes.
Councilwoman Bravo.
Yes.
Mayor Mitchell.
Yes.
The motion carries. Okay I think we are done with the LPA is that correct?
Yes.
Okay this meeting is adjourned thank you everyone um for your dedication hard work. And and to the staff it's like we come up here and discuss it all but they're doing all the work behind the scenes to even bring it up for discussion and. I really appreciate it. Thank you mayor.